Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission meeting, November 2, 2023. This is our open session. Ms. Costa, can you please take the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Kozar will be joining us. Oh, she's here. Great. Commissioner McMahon.
Good afternoon, I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Stidham.
I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
I'm here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hewitt.
Present.
Thank you. Chair Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon. Okay. Commissioner Cash.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Giacchetti.
Here.
Thank you. I'll note that Marcela Costa, the Executive Director, Anne Skyler, the General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, the Urban Design and Plan Review Division Director are also in the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Costa. Noting the presence of a quorum, I'll call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and I will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection, the agenda as posted shall be adopted as our order of business. We would like to now ask if someone could please play the Pledge of Allegiance and feel free to join in if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Under God. Thank you. And NCPC will continue to conduct our meetings online until renovations on the commission chambers are complete. I want to share now how we will conduct our meetings and our business following staff presentations and any other testimony. I will ask for a motion and a second as appropriate. During the commission deliberations, I will use the round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any comments. During the deliberations, commissioners should be on video unless you're experiencing technical difficulties. And so I'm going to begin now with our agenda. Agenda item number, I'm sorry, agenda item number one was covered. Agenda item number two is report of the chair. And I'd just like to say I'm very excited. We have a retreat coming up tomorrow, so I look forward to working with our fellow commissioners in looking to the future after we review our past accomplishments and experiences. And because there are no other items that I have to report on this month, I'm going to hopefully move through the agenda today and ask next for Mr. Costa, the Executive Director, if he has any report.
Thank you, Chair Goodman, and good afternoon. I have one announcement of interest to the public. The Smithsonian Institution and NCPC are accepting public comments on the environmental assessment scope of issues for the construct Integrated Bezos Learning Center project, a proposed addition to the National Air and Space Museum. The Smithsonian NCPC staff will host a site tour on November 6 at 9:30 a.m. for interested members of the public. Comments will be accepted through Monday, November 16th. Further information is available on NCPC's website. This concludes my report and you do have your full, my full report in your packets, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Does anyone have a question for the Executive Director? Hearing none. Agenda item number four. The legislative update from Ms. Skyler, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have anything to report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Skyler. The next agenda item number five is the consent calendar. There is only one item on this month's consent calendar. This is for the approval of the preliminary site development plans for the Shepherd Parkway Parklands rehabilitation submitted by the National Park Service. Are there any?
I was going to move approval, Madam Chair.
Okay, I was just going to ask if there are any questions by anyone, any commissioners? If not, I, we have a motion from Commissioner Vice Chair Elizabeth Hewitt. Is there a second?
Unmute. Second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Wright. Is there, okay, then I'm going to ask Ms. Costa, could you confirm the motion, please, and the second and take the vote by roll call? Thank you.
Thank you. The motion was made by Vice Chair Hewitt and the second by Commissioner Wright. I'll take the roll call and then, Madam Chair, I have a short announcement after that. Commissioner Kozar?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Vice Chair Hewitt?
Yes.
You, Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Oh, here. Okay, great. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
And Commissioner Giacchetti?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and the motion is carried. Agenda item 6A is to approve comments on the draft Washington Navy Yard Southeast Corner master plan. We do have a presentation and Mr. Webb, can you please begin?
Yes. Hello, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Thank you for confirming. So, good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The U.S. Department of the Navy has submitted a draft master plan for portions of the southeast corner of the Washington Navy Yard for commission comment. The area subject to the master plan includes the O parcels and portions of the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail and piers. The project area is about 15 acres. In the future, the applicant will submit specific site and building development plans to NCPC for approval consistent with the master plan. I will note the commissioner received an amended EDR from staff yesterday. The commission's review of draft master plans focuses on topics such as program needs, proposed uses, sustainability strategies, and consistency with the comprehensive plan. Today, I will provide an overview of the draft plan for the O parcels along with staff's recommendations for plan refinement for the next commission review. Here is a site map showing the location of the Washington Navy Yard located in southeast Washington DC, just north of the Anacostia River and across from the Anacostia Park. Zooming in, here is a closer view that shows the O parcels in the southeast corner of the Navy Yard. The site includes a number of existing buildings, parking lots, and a parking garage. Several structures and buildings are considered historic. As part of the master plan, a mixed-use program of development is proposed, including residential, retail, hospitality, and office spaces. The Navy has opted to pursue this master plan as a federal action as the O parcels will remain federal land while leased to a private developer. And NCPC is exercising its review authority in lieu of zoning. The lease agreement between the Navy and the private developer is part of a larger transaction which allows the Navy to take control of the E parcels at the northwest corner of the Navy Yard shown on this image. The E parcels are currently controlled by GSA with development rights assigned per the Southeast Federal Center Master Plan. The Navy proposes to obtain the E parcels to improve the overall anti-terrorism posture of the Navy Yard. And the Navy plans to accommodate a new museum on the E parcels. The master plan for the remainder of the Navy Yard will be submitted separately in the future. For the O parcels, some existing buildings will be repurposed and reused while others may be demolished. Portions of the Washington Navy Yard are listed as a National Historic Landmark District. As I mentioned earlier, while the master planned area will be subject to a long-term lease to a private developer, the land will remain under federal ownership. The mixed-use development will be located outside the modified secure perimeter of the Washington Navy Yard. The new development will create a new neighborhood at this end of the Navy Yard's riverfront and the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail located along the south end of the site will remain open for public use. Here are more images of some of the buildings and structures located in the O parcels, including historic buildings that will be rehabilitated for new uses in the master plan as part of the mixed-use development. The applicant also intends to reinterpret and reuse the historic pier footprints within the Anacostia River to allow for public access. Now let's discuss the master plan draft. Under the draft master plan, up to 1.7 million square feet of development is proposed. The applicant defined four planning principles for the draft master plan and they include increased public access to historic elements for the first time in over 100 years, while making the historic elements and their interpretation centered to the design, provide an expansive waterfront experience that enhances the existing neighborhood, preserve and strengthen view sheds on Parsons Avenue and 10th Streets, and extend existing historic Navy Yard north-south building orientations to the new construction buildings. The proposed mix of uses, including residential and retail, will bring new activity to this portion of the waterfront, replacing surface parking lots and low-scale buildings. The development will also include affordable housing, which is a significant need in the region. The private developer has also committed to rehabilitating several historic buildings, improving and maintaining portions of the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail and providing public access to the historic Marine Railway area. The Navy evaluated design options with the Section 106 consulting parties beginning in 2019 to accommodate the proposed development program while balancing historic preservation considerations, including visual impacts to the Washington Navy Yard National Historic Landmark District and the historic view corridors of the Lawn Font Plan. Based on the discussion and evaluation during the Section 106 consultation process, the applicant developed a preferred massing approach which allows building heights up to 130 feet with the building stepped back away from the historic districts to minimize visual impacts on historic resources. The proposed layout of the development has been configured in a way to minimize impacts on historic properties. The master plan includes three zones as identified in the programmatic agreement, and they are the Marine Railway Model Basin Zone, the Waterfront Zone, and the New Construction Zone. Design guidelines were developed in the programmatic agreement and will apply to each of the zones. Here is a rendering of the Marine Railway Model Basin Zone, and this zone includes contributing and non-contributing buildings surrounding an inlet boat slip. In this zone, historic buildings and structures will be preserved and rehabilitated to the maximum extent possible and hardscape and circulation improvements will be designed to maximize the preservation of existing original or later historically significant fabric and be compatible with the zone's historic context. Here is another rendering of the Marine Railway Model Basin Zone. New retail and commercial uses are proposed in this zone. On this image, the building on the left is the current Navy Museum, which the developer intends to rehabilitate as a food hall. On the right of this rendering, you can see some of the proposed new massing and building heights in the O parcel. The waterfront zone extends along the north shore of the Anacostia River from 11th Street on the east to the southeast Federal Center Boundary on the west. It includes piers 1 and 2, which contribute to the Landmark District and the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail. The waterfront zone is intended for public circulation and recreational uses. This zone will include renovation of nonhistoric elements such as the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail and the addition of new elements such as marinas, recreational amenities, and in-water landscape features that will incorporate compatible contemporary design with interpretation of the Washington Navy Yard's history. Finally, the new construction zone occupies the area north of the waterfront zone and east of the Marine Railway Model Basin Zone. This area includes contributing building 166 and several non-contributing buildings, including a parking garage. The new development zone is expected to include modern residential, retail, and hospitality uses. New construction in this zone is expected to meet LEED gold and net zero standards. Flooding and sea level rise has been taken into account by raising the building base elevations to 15 feet based on the 500-year flood plan at approximately 14.2 feet plus approximately 0.8 feet for the tidal buffer zone. In the new construction zone, the historic building 166 shown in the images on the right will be incorporated in the new development with the northeast and west facades of the north wing retained and restored. Staff finds that the Navy's preferred massing concept balances the applicant's programmatic needs for a new mixed-use development with historic preservation considerations in the context of a National Historic Landmark District. In particular, the master plan integrates historic buildings for new uses in the development, minimizes the visual impact of the new development on the historic district with the tallest building is located away from the landmark area, maintains key Lawn Font Plan corridors and view sheds, retains and enhances connections to the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail, and addresses flooding and sea level rise through the siding and elevation of new structures. Before we move to the next discussion topic, we did receive a letter from the group Building Bridges Across the River related to the proposed 11th Street Bridge Park and concerns regarding the new development's potential impacts to views from its capital overlook. The Bridge Park received a final approval by the commission in October 2022. As you can see here on this image, the proposed park will be located just southeast of the O parcels in the Navy Yard. And the park plans identify an elevated Navy Yard or capital overlook which is located on the south end of the bridge closest to the master plan area. Here is a rendering from the project review showing an aerial of the new bridge and a drone view towards the Capitol. Other renderings from the overlook in the final project submission for the Bridge Park show views of the river, the Capitol Dome, the new Frederick Douglass Bridge, the Capitol Hill neighborhood, as well as Anacostia to the south. Here is a current view towards the Capitol, which we believe approximates the potential view from the Capitol overlook on the proposed 11th Street Bridge Park. The proposed site plan and building massing coordinated through the Section 106 consultation process are based on the protection of the primary view corridors related to the Lawn Font Streets identified in the plan of the City of Washington National Register of Historic Places listing. The protected corridors include the north-south streets as shown here, which are 10th and Parsons. The views from the proposed Bridge Park overlook are not protected views in the National Register nor the comprehensive plan, and it is possible that the new Navy Yard development, in addition to the recently approved Marine barracks bachelor enlisted quarters and undeveloped parcels on M Street, will impact the view towards the Capitol Dome. However, staff believes additional coordination needs to occur. So prior to the next review, staff recommends that the commission require the Navy and private developer to work with the Building Bridges Across the River project team to identify the existing and proposed view sheds from the 11th Street Bridge Park overlooks and evaluate whether modifications to the master plan massing could accommodate sightlines to the U.S. Capitol Dome, the Washington Monument, or other landmarks without compromising the density or impacting historic resources and view sheds and develop a process for ongoing coordination between the two projects from design development through construction and implementation. Now let's shift the discussion to other topics such as transportation, environment and sustainability, and affordable housing that should be addressed in a draft master plan. Starting with transportation issues, the Navy completed a transportation analysis concurrent with the environmental impact statement, which analyzed the impacts of the selected alternative on the local road network, including the private development on the O parcels and construction of a relocated museum on the E parcels. While some of the intersections near the Navy Yard are near failing under existing conditions, the development associated with the land exchange would not cause any of the intersections to reach failing conditions. The Navy determined the action would not result in significant impacts to traffic. The EIS included several mitigation measures that could be used to limit impacts to these intersections, and most of these are transportation demand management strategies for the applicant to incorporate, as well as providing information on websites to encourage visitors to the sites to use routes that avoid the intersections of concern. The Navy coordinated with the district's Department of Transportation through the environmental impact statement process and development of the Comprehensive Transportation Review Study, and DDOT believes the mitigation measures are sufficient. Several internal streets will serve the development. These streets generally align with the existing streets which follow historic alignments. The developer will build and maintain the streets which will remain in federal ownership. Additional information regarding the typical street scape sections and material palette will be necessary for the next review. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission request the applicant provide for the next submission typical street sections that show the dimensions, material palettes, and tree landscape plantings anticipated on O Street, 10th Street, and Parsons Avenue. In reviewing the project, staff notes that the federal elements of the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol recommend consulting the parking policies of local jurisdictions to determine appropriate parking standards for non-workplace federal uses, including residential, commercial, and institutional uses. The existing parking on the O parcels totals 1,700 spaces, of which the majority is in an existing parking garage that will be reused. The master plan will cap parking at around 1,550 spaces or a net reduction of 150 spaces, which includes spaces in the existing garage, surface parking, on-street parking, and above or below grade structure parking, including spaces for federal use. The master plan includes the rehabilitation of an existing parking garage for use by the Navy and the new development. No new parking is proposed as part of the master plan. DDOT indicated they support capping the parking at 1,550 spaces. A minimum of 20% of the total parking spaces will have access to electric vehicle charging infrastructure. As the master plan is further refined, additional details should be included to support diverse transportation options for residents and visitors. Therefore, staff requests the applicant provide, as part of the next review, further details regarding commitments to the provision of bicycle parking, electric vehicle charging stations, bike share stations, and other related transportation measures. The Riverwalk Trail is an important asset to the district and the community. Improved maintenance will benefit pedestrians and bicyclists. As such, staff recommends the commission express support for improvement of the trail in preservation of public access. Staff requests that the applicant provide for the next submission typical street sections that show the dimensions, material palettes, and tree and landscape plantings anticipated on O Street, 10th Street, and Parsons Avenue. These details will be necessary to understand the quality and extent of the developer's commitments to publicly accessible spaces. Now let's discuss topics related to the environment and sustainability. The project will pursue enhanced sustainability standards such as net zero certification, neighborhood-wide renewable energy production, and climate resilience and floodplain management. Buildings will be constructed to a minimum standard of LEED gold or recent comparable standard. In addition, buildings will pursue carbon net zero as well as pursuing renewable energy credits under LEED and comply with the Energy Conservation Code. Buildings will be designed and constructed to withstand future climate change impacts, including sea level rise, increased precipitation, and increased heat exposure. In particular, the applicant has considered flooding and sea level rise in the establishment of the base flood elevation levels for the new construction. As part of the NCPC design review process, each building will provide a sustainability and green building plan which will address building energy efficiency and renewable energy production, net zero certification, stormwater management, climate resilience, and floodplain management. Additional information will be necessary regarding sustainable site and building strategies prior to final review. For example, the applicant has committed to meeting the district's stormwater regulations, but for the final review of the master plan, an overview of the approach will be helpful. As such, staff requests that the applicant provide for the next review a stormwater management approach and summary of potential measures and locations. In addition, while the applicant has committed to LEED gold or equivalent, the master plan should include an overview of the strategies that are to be considered with individual project plans. Therefore, staff requests the applicant provide for the next review a summary of the potential green building strategies that may be implemented as part of individual projects. As I mentioned previously, the applicant intends to reinterpret and reuse the historic pier footprints to allow for public access. The piers are not publicly accessible today and are in need of maintenance. However, they could be an amenity to the neighborhood, particularly if water access and interpretive elements are incorporated. Staff recommends the commission support the reuse and reinterpretation of the piers and the integration of sustainability measures, including new wetlands and river habitat. Additional design development will be required for this project in the future. So therefore, staff requests that the applicant coordinate with DOE, the National Park Service, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the U.S. Coast Guard, among others, as plans for the piers are further developed. The Navy has indicated that 8% of the residential component of the project will be set aside as affordable housing as part of the district's inclusionary zoning program. Staff notes the federal elements of the comprehensive plan do not provide policies regarding the amount of affordable housing to be provided in private development projects. Therefore, staff referred to planning best practices as well as the standards of the local jurisdiction for guidance. The project will provide new housing where there is currently none in close proximity to a large federal employment area. The inclusion of affordable housing aligns with many of the administration's goals. As such, staff recommends that the commission notes the developer will participate in the district's inclusionary housing program and set aside 8% of development for affordable housing units based on 60% median family income with additional details and program to be worked out by final review. As this is the draft review for the master plan, the commission will review the final master plan in the next few months, which should address and incorporate the recommendations I have covered in this presentation. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission comments favorably on the overall preferred approach presented in the draft master plan for the Washington Navy Yard Southeast Corner O parcels, including the overall density, mix of uses, and proposed rehabilitation of historic buildings. Also, staff recommends that the applicant and private developer continue to coordinate with DOE, DDOT, the district's Office of Planning, and others as the master plan is further refined. As I've already covered the recommendations, I will not repeat them again, but at this time, I would like to introduce Captain Omar Tobias, who is the commanding officer of the U.S. Navy's NAFLEC Washington, who would like to provide remarks to the commission. Captain Tobias is joined by Nick Topkin's Flag and other representatives of the Navy and the private developer who are here to assist in answering any questions the commission may have. Thank you. Thank you.
Herr Goodman, you are on on mute, and I think we're wa- waiting for Captain Tobias to join us on screen.
Yes, my apologies.
That's okay.
I was I was thanking Mr. Webb for his presentation and asking Mr. Tobias if he is going to comment. Are we having a technical challenge? Or is he present?
Maybe let's give it just a minute, like thirty seconds, and we'll see if he can join us.
Okay.
If not, we'll proceed to questions of Mr. Webb and the public testimony. And perhaps it says that our uh the applicant uh uh team at Navfac is on the call and unmuted, so if Captain um Tobias could join us, that would be great.
Hi, I think we are having technical difficulties. They are on and they're trying to speak, and it doesn't appear to be working on their end. Um, so I think we could go ahead and maybe get started, and then we could always have um Captain Tobias speak at the end. Um, we try to work out those difficulties.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flag. Um, what we will do now is if commissioners have questions of Mr. Webb on the project, this is your opportunity to ask questions. I just want to point out, we do have um uh nine individuals here to share testimony on this project today that we need to hear from after. Any questions you have of the commissioner? And then we will move into um emotion and our our deliberation as a commission on the project. So first, uh, let us begin. Are there any questions for um uh Mr. Webb at this time about the project?
Commissioner.
Yes, I I had a couple of questions um for Mr. Webb related to uh parcel E. Um, and I I realize this is review of the master plan, but I'm curious about a few things. Um, so I I assume that the transfer from G S A to the Navy of parcel E um is a separate action, but is it, was it covered in the E I S?
Um, my understanding and and Ms. Topkin's flag can join that that was covered in the E I S, that both the the transfer of parcel E from G S A to the Navy and that they evaluated that as well as the development on the O parcels. Nick, that is correct.
Yes, that is correct. We looked at the entire action associated with the land exchange, including the Navy acquiring the E parcels and exchanging the southeast corner with the developer. Um, so we determined through consultation with the N C P C staff that the um the transaction itself um was not actually subject to N C P C review because of the authority granted to the Navy through the National Defense Authorization Act. Um, so we are strictly submitting the master plans and the um the follow-on development projects. So the E parcels will end up coming in front of the commission first as a master plan approval sometime um net starting next spring. And then the development of the museum on the E parcels would also come through as a development review.
Okay, you actually answered a couple of my questions in that. Could you clarify? I I under I I think I got confused. The um O parcel I thought was a lease to the private developer. Was it, is it in fact an exchange, or is it a lease?
Uh, the the on the O parcels, it is a a lease at this time between the Navy and the private developer.
Okay, and the transfer with G S A was covered under the N V A A authority, right? So that's that's why it's not going to be coming uh to N C P C for review.
That is correct.
Okay, and then my my last question was related to the process for the development of parcel E, but Ms. Flag um addressed that already. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Are there other questions from commissioners for Mr. Webb?
I had a quick kind of technical question.
Yes, Commissioner Cash.
Related to the E D R. So I noticed the language in there about requiring the consultation, and I think that that that's great, but have we ever actually in a review of like a preliminary master plan like this, like had a require or that we recommend, and if they don't do it, we yell at them again? It just it kind of jumped out to me. We don't often require things in our E D Rs.
Director Acosta.
Yeah, I I would say it's rare when we do it, but this is subsequent to a uh future master plan approval. So this is one thing that we would like them to or would require them to do prior to submitting the final master plan submission to us. So this is this is my condition.
We're just being a little more upfront than we normally are.
Yeah, because it's that it's an outstanding issue. I think the commission needs that information before it can become final determination uh with respect to the master plan.
Okay, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Any other questions? Commissioners?
Herr Goodman, I think Captain Tobias may be ready to
Oh.
his testimony.
Wonderful. Captain Tobias, welcome, and we're happy you were able to work out your technical issues. Would you like to present on the project at this time?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I had to call an audible, and I'm dialing from my personal cell phone.
Um, I I think we're getting some reverb.
Yeah. Yeah.
You gotta unmute that. Well, uh, we're still sorting out. I'm sorry for the challenges. Give give us one second.
I think the Navfac has to mute there.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you.
Yeah, so this this project is very important to the Navy. We're thankful for your time and the opportunity to present. I I just wanted to convey uh on behalf of Admiral LaCorne, the Commandant for Naval District Washington, that is very important to us. It will enable us to help further better execute our mission and also be could be good community partners. Uh, we're open to, you know, feedback and input to make sure that we we complete this project in a satisfactory manner for all. Um, I have, hopefully, someone on the line. Her it's uh Nick. She's on the line with me to answer any detailed questions. Um, and I'm hopeful that she has connection to you all. Um, but with that, I just wanted to express my appreciation for your time today and the importance of this project. Over.
Thank you very much, Captain Tobias, and thanks for your patience today as we work through this presentation um electronically or virtually. And I do believe uh Ms. Tompkins' flag is on on and has been on for the presentation. And do commissioners have any additional questions for any of the representatives of the project? Or for um Mr. Webb? Hearing none. And I'd like to begin uh and introduce our um uh individuals who've come today to provide testimony. And the first person um we have uh here today is um Mr. uh Scott Krantz with Building Bridges Across the River. Uh, Mr. Krantz, you will have five minutes if you would like to begin, please, and welcome.
Welcome. Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Um, thank you for this opportunity um to you, Madam Chair, and the entire commission. Um, so my name is Scott Kratz, and I am the director of the Eleventh Street Bridge Park, which is a collaboration of the Ward Eight-based nonprofit Building Bridges Across the River and the District Department of Transportation. And over the last ten years, we've engaged local residents and key stakeholders to transform uh an aged-out freeway into a new civic space that will physically metaphorically reconnect two long-divided communities, Monumental Washington and Historic Anacostia. This project is immediately adjacent to the east um the of the this proposed um development that you have in front of you today. We thank N C P C for their unanimous approval of our final design. And working with D dot, we aim to solicit our general contractor and break ground in twenty twenty four. The park has been driven by over a thousand meetings with the community that has created park programming, selected the design team, and informed a series of housing, workforce, small business preservation, and arts and culture strategies to ensure that these tens of thousands of residents who've shaped this new civic space can be the ones that benefit from it. And during this multi-year process, we listened carefully and intently and addressed stakeholder concerns through respectful dialogue, finding common ground, including with staff from the Navy Yard, from the U S Navy, National Park Service, local residents, business owners, and faith communities. For instance, rep- representatives from the boating community participating in our design competition expressed concerns about floating gardens in the river that would block access on the to them uh historic African-American boathouses along the Anacostia and regular large regattas. We work thoughtfully and patiently together to address these concerns while maintaining the Eleventh Street Bridge Park's environmental goals. As stated earlier, one of the community-requested programming areas for the Eleventh Street Bridge Park was views of the Monumental Corridor, specifically views of the U S Capitol Building, which can be seen from the top of the Westernmost Trust of the Bridge Park. According to an N C P C document from last year of in May of twenty twenty two, quote, "One of the most important contributors to the capital city's image is its unmistakable and symbolic skyline and sweeping vistas in the Monumental Core." "The views of Washington reveal a skyline punctuated not by commercial skyscrapers, but by architectural embellishments and civic symbols," unquote. "We agree that these views for residents and tourists alike are critical to understanding and appreciating our nation's capital." "A few years ago, we commissioned a drone to take footage from the height of the soon-to-be-constructed Capitol overlook, which stands at nineteen point seven meters or sixty-four point six feet uh that we've shared with the Navy and the developer that demonstrates these views." "As stated earlier, the submitted Southeast Navy Yard master plan includes two hundred and thirty-foot-tall buildings that would completely block these views from the public." "We thank N C P C staff for including in their recommendation today to require the Navy and private developer prior to the next review to work with Building Bridges Across the River Project Team and D dot to identify the existing and proposed view sheds from the Eleventh Street Bridge Park overlooks and evaluate modifications to the master plan uh massing to accommodate sightlines of the U S Capitol Dome, the Washington Monument, and other landmarks, as well as developing a process for ongoing coordination between the two projects from design, development, through construction, and implementation. We strongly encourage the commission to incorporate the staff's this staff's um suggested language. I'm confident that as we sit down with the Navy and the development team with respect and collaboration, we'll come up with a solution that's mu- mutually acceptable to both parties. We can realize the community's visions, the community's vision for the Eleventh Street Bridge Park, and identify a positive solution that can create uh an important view corridor for residents of the District of Columbia while securing the density needed for this development to succeed. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have."
Thank you, Mr. Kratz, and I do apologize. I mispronounced your name, and we appreciate your remarks. Um, does anyone have any questions at this time for uh Mr. Kratz? I apologize. We're not
That's okay. That that happens all the time. I've been Katz, Krantz, I've been a lot of different names, so no worries.
So sorry. Well, if any, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kratz at this time? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our second speaker. Uh, Mr. Freeman from We Act Radio. Mr. Freeman, are you here? You have five minutes. Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, it works better when you unmute.
I learned that.
Yes. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, first, let me say uh uh ceasefire. There's a genocide going on, so let me start with that ceasefire. Now, having said that, peace and blessings. My name is Kimon Freeman, co-founder of We Act Radio. I'm on the radical side of Martin Luther King Avenue at the foot of Eleventh Street Bridge. And I would like to thank the National Capitol Planning Commission for finding an amicable solution to the view shed issue raised by Eleventh Street Bridge Park. It's important to recognize that economic development and community development are not the same thing, and that community development makes a community a better place to live and work, whereas economic development is purely the creation of a wealth from which many communities do not benefit from the results. So thank you again for taking into account that the Eleventh Street Bridge Park is a ten-year-old project that came from the local community, was designed by the community, and is a resource for the residents of that community. So it's very encouraging to see the public sector and the private sector come together with mutual respect in the spirit of collective collaboration. And it is my hope and wish that the Navy uh uh Yard Master Plan sets a a new precedent uh for all future projects going forward uh for uh east of the river, where the public policy reflects public input and economic development reflects a social responsibility uh to the communities in which they operate. And I hope to see many of you at the historic opening of the Eleventh Street Bridge Park combining the Monumental Washington and Historic Anacostia. Thank you for this time, and thank you again for taking into consideration the concerns of the community in this project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman. We appreciate your remarks, and um does anyone um on the commission have a question for Mr. Freeman at this time?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Freeman.
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank, it's always good uh hearing from him. He's a very significant force in our neighborhood. I want to find whether he, the the major player, one of the major players in this is uh Red Brick. Uh, what has been your uh awareness of Red Brick's engagement in the community and all this effort?
I have not been in contact with Red Brick pertaining this issue, but my encounters with Red Brick up until this point has been um um stellar as for, you know, to say for any developer in the city. So um I was going to say it's my best relationship with a developer in the city, but that's not saying much. So I want to make sure I'm giving them the proper accolade. I think they've been a great community partner uh up to this point. I think that um their uh willingness to work with Eleventh Street Bridge Bridge Park on this issue is a proof of that. And so uh I don't see uh it being uh any reflection um or negatively on their outlook going forward. Uh, but again, I have not spoke with them specifically on this issue, but up until now, it has been a love fest with Red Brick in my in my eyes and in this community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman, for your uh answers. Uh, are there any other questions from commissioners? Any other questions? Hearing none, I'm going to move on. Thank you very much, Mr. Freeman. Uh, thank you, Mr. Dixon, for your question. The third speaker is Ms. Latasha Gunnels. Ms. Gunnels, you have three minutes. Are you here?
Madam Chair, I don't believe Ms. Gunnels is here.
Okay, thank you for that information, Ms. Costa. Fourth speaker is Ms. Shawnet Monroe. Uh, Ms. Monroe, you have three minutes. Are is Ms. Monroe present?
Um, we have had some technical difficulties connecting uh Ms. Monroe. If we could call for her again at the at the
Very good.
Um, thank you.
I'll come back to her. Thank you. Um, fifth person is Mr. Ronald Moten um from Don't Mute DC. Mr. Moten, do you have five minutes? Is Mr. Moten present?
I do not believe he is uh on the on the uh the Zoom meeting.
Okay, very good. Um, then moving on, the sixth speaker is Mr. Raimi um Batam Batamolsi. He has three minutes. Mr. Batamolsi, are you present? Do you see anyone, Julia? Are we having
I I do not believe he is on the Zoom call.
Okay, our seventh speaker is Mr. Vasilev.
Uh, I do not believe Mr. Vasilev is on the call, but he did submit written testimony that the commission has.
Okay. Um, then our eighth speaker is Ms. Charlotte Thomas. Is Ms. Thomas present?
She is not currently on the Zoom call.
Okay, thank you. Our ninth speaker is Pastor Ricardo Payne from Serving Each Other. Uh, is Pastor Payne present? And if so
Yes, ma'am.
Well, welcome. Um, Pastor Payne, you have five minutes to speak, and welcome. Well, welcome, Pastor Payne. You have five minutes to speak, and welcome to the NCPC Commission.
Thank you so very much, Chairman Goodman, and to the commissioners as well. My name is Ricardo Payne, pastor emeritus of the Lighthouse Baptist Church, located in Ward Eight, and executive director of Serving Each Other. In both of these capacities, I have the honor of engaging and serving a range of district residents, including our most vulnerable community members. I'm grateful to be able to meet people all over our city where they are, often in times of crisis and need, to share prayer, inspiration, food, clothes, and other resources. I'm here today to briefly testify in support of the Washington Navy Southeast Corner Master Plan that the Navy has admitted, and submitted rather, to the commission for reviewing approval. Having previously served as an administrative project officer, go United States Army, nothing against the captain, the White House Communications Agency, I understand the significance of a project such as this and the advancement of national security. I'm pleased to know that the Navy has put forth this project to further ensure that our immediate community and country remain protected from threats. Additionally, I'm also pleased to see that the Navy, in collaboration with Red Brick, conceptualize a plan that will transform those underutilized parcels and create housing and job opportunities, cultural experiences, and access to nature all along the riverfront for residents living on both sides of the river. Moreover, I'm encouraged to know that the Navy identified Red Brick as its development partner. As someone who has seen Red Brick in action in the community, I'm confident that Mr. Skinner and his colleagues will be committed, and they are committed, to delivering great building and space, all the while working right by side people. I have no doubt that Red Brick would do a great job delivering this project and bringing communities together at the same time. Now more than ever, it's important that all Washingtonians of all backgrounds, along with visitors to our city, have opportunity to come together and experience the same joy and benefits that come with being in our nation's capital. I believe this project, combined with the Eleventh Street Bridge Park, will greatly transform the Capitol Riverfront and have a positive rippling effect across the city and region. That is, it is my, that have been said, rather, it is my sincere hope that this commission votes to approve the Washington Navy Yard Southeast Corner Master Plan and allow the Navy's exciting plans to advance. Thank you, ma'am, madam chairman, as well as the other commissioners and others for the opportunity to testify today and share my recommendation with you and your colleagues.
Thank you, Pastor Payne. We appreciate your presence here today and your testimony. We are grateful for all who have come and submitted. We've also received fourteen letters on this project. These letters were sent to the commission, and they are available on the website. I see some hands up questions. I believe Captain Tobias.
I just wanted to say thank you, Pastor Payne. Even though you were in the Army, I still love you.
You're welcome, Captain. You're welcome, sir.
We're having a love fest here. I see Ms. Custer, you have a hand raised, and are we going to be able to hear from Ms. Monroe?
I'm chair.
Yes, yes, sir. Commissioner Dixon?
I tried to raise my hand. My button seems to not be making it go up. First of all, I want to thank Pastor for his, thank him for his service.
Thank you, sir.
And also, you mentioned, though this might not be in our lane, you mentioned the job opportunities that will come from this. Are you, can you be more specific in your knowledge of that?
My knowledge of that, sir, there are approximately six thousand jobs that would be created during the construction process, and of that, after it's completed, approximately four hundred permanent jobs would be made available to residents and those that qualify. That's my understanding, sir.
Is, are those jobs related to the work of Red Brick or are they related to the, the bridge itself, the, the?
I cannot answer that level of detail. Mr. Dixon, it's good to see you as well, sir. I cannot answer to that level of detail, but I'm sure that someone at Red Brick can in fact answer to you as far as the demographics as it relates to employment.
I just, again, I, I, that would be, I'm curious about always when there's a project in our area that we are part of the process, not only, you know, pouring the concrete, but also ongoing work within the project itself.
Absolutely, sir.
Maybe they will get back, and thank you for your efforts.
Oh, and, and, and they will, Mr. Dixon, that over the years, I've worked with Red Brick on a number of initiatives in our community, and I have found both Mr. Dubin as well as Mr. Skinner be people of their word. Now, there may be some other aspects out there that I'm unaware of, but like you asked, it's a direct question, they will give you a direct answer. And, and they hold themselves accountable, as well as I hold them accountable as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon, and thank you again, Captain Payne, for your remarks. I'm sorry, Pastor Payne, for your remarks. I see another hand up. Mr. Moten is here, another person to provide testimony. Were you able to get on? I think you're on mute.
I'm sorry, my meeting went over that I was in, and Mr. Kimon reminded me that I was not on. Apology, I have.
That's perfectly all right. Welcome to the NCPC Commission meeting, and you're here to provide testimony, and we're welcome.
Yes.
Welcome your remarks.
My testimony is very short and brief. I just want to say that thank you all for having the hearing. I'm very familiar with Red Brick, liked them a whole lot, and I'm very familiar with the Eleventh Street Bridge Project. And I just want to make sure what happened where I grew up at in Pepworth, Washington, DC, doesn't happen in Anacostia and in the area surrounding the Eleventh Street Bridge, where people are not a part of the process. I think both projects can work, just like the Eleventh Street Bridge has been dealing with us for the eleven, I mean, the last ten years, conversating with us, getting insight and comments from the community that they really implemented into the project. I just want to make sure that Red Brick does the same thing. They've been a great partner. Everything that I've seen and done in Anacostia, I just want to make sure it continues. That's it.
Very good. Well, thank you again for your testimony. Thanks for making it to the meeting in spite of this busy schedule. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I, any questions for Mr. Moten? Hearing none. I see Ms. Custer has testimony evidently provided by Ms. Moore that you're going to read because she was unable to join due to technical difficulties?
That's, that's correct. So if I can read into the record the testimony of Shawnet or the comments of Shawnet Moore, who is a longtime Ward Eight resident and business owner. Dear Planning Committee, this letter has been prepared to share my thoughts on the master plan. As a longtime resident stakeholder and now business owner of Board Eight, I consider the decision to build three one hundred and thirty-foot buildings along the adjacent corridors of the Eleventh Street Bridge selfish. It is obvious that residents would oppose this plan, and that's why it was brought to our attention seventy-two hours before the time to decide. As we know, Ward Eight has been deemed as an underserved community where crime is high, individuals lack education, crises with health disparities, and many of the historic homes have become dilapidated. We are finally at a place where beautification is playing a role in our community. This doesn't mean that wherever you see a space, put up a building. What about the longevity of the safety of the building's height or the safety of its foundation? Two years ago, city officials agreed to the rezoning of all eight wards. The rezoning gave residents hope, causing us to be included for once. The Eleventh Street Bridge Project has provided leverage for small business owners like myself to showcase our ideas and inventions, an open market for travelers near and far to experience. We all are looking forward to networking in mid-two thousand and twenty-four with residents east and west of the river. My opinion of it is that the three buildings would cause blocking of the southwest and downtown views. There was a time when, about twenty years ago, I was one of the only tenants in my apartment building that worked. The view of Washington motivated me to endure and not to reflect on the issues around me. I'm reminded that in the eighteen hundreds, Ward Eight was named Union Town. There is no unity in making decisions behind closed doors. Though these buildings may present to onlookers as a major ordeal, these buildings will create barriers for those of us who reside, work, or live in Ward Eight. This is fine and dandy for individuals looking for convenience and places to live, but what about the remnant, us, the individuals who've been here all along? Give us a chance to respond. Give Eleventh Street Bridge Project a chance to share insights on the master plan. What about us? We matter, or are you just desiring to gentrify our community for your own good? After combining wards, here's another idea to create the thin line between them and us. We are not valley people, but we are a village that will do what's needed to sustain in Ward Eight. I oppose this master plan.
Thank you, Ms. Custer, and thank you to Ms., I'm going to run back here, Ms. Monroe, for your contribution to this discussion and deliberation. We're very grateful for your, your willingness to share your, your thoughts on this with the commission. I do want to remind, unless anyone has any questions, I see Ms. Sullivan.
Yes, thank you. I just want to provide a little bit of background before you entertain a motion for discussion on where, on the amendment itself. When staff was looking at the submission and looking at the public testimony, we realized that we didn't have enough information on what the views from the proposed overlook are under today's condition, nor do we have enough information on what the views would be with the proposed development. We are asking for the Navy and Red Brick to work with building bridges to share information on heights of the overlooks and, and all of that drone images so that we can understand that better and be able to evaluate it better. That is the first step. That's what we're asking for right now, and to see what it would take if it, if these buildings are going to block those views and which blue views are blocking, what it would take to try to preserve those views. But we are not jumping ahead and saying to do that right now. So I just want to make sure everyone is clear prior to discussion that we're asking for the analysis of, of, of both under today's conditions and looking at what the development is going to do to that, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Vice Chair Hewlett? You had a question?
I do indeed, and I, and I have comments as well, but I, the one thing that I appreciate the testimony of everyone who has spoken and plus all these letters of folks who have written in. So it's important that we hear from the communities which we serve. We are public servants. We're not here for our own benefit. And so it's important, and in that regard, I thank everyone, but particularly Ms. Monroe for sharing her comments. And one of the things, and I think that's of concern to all of us, and I think we pride ourselves. We've had a retreat before. As Madam Chair indicated, we're having a retreat tomorrow. It's important that we make ourselves available and that our public gets to see our plans that may affect them, and they have the opportunity to chime in. And so the one thing that Ms. Monroe indicated to me that resonated, and I hope this is not the case. She said we only, they only had seventy-two hours' notice. And I don't know if that's accurate or not. And if it is accurate, if there's something on our part, I'm hoping that we can do better in the future or insisting that we do better in the future, if that's the case. But because, because input from the community is vital to us. So if someone can please address that, if not now, afterwards, because we, we want people to have opportunity to chime in. Thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett, and I see that Ms. Tompkins' flag from representing the project has her hand up, and, and I'd like you to speak now, if you can, to address the questions.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Hewlett. We agree. We want to hear from the public, and that is something that we strive to do when we go through our environmental and cultural resource reviews for projects, because a lot of times our projects are behind security lines, and they're not things that people get to see on a regular basis. And so we really do try to make a concerted effort through those processes to be able to hear from the public on, on what we're trying to do. And we had a very public process through the environmental impact statement, looking at the environmental impacts of this land exchange and the follow-on development that would, that would occur if the land exchange moved forward. So we had throughout that process, which was almost two years long, we had, we started with a public scoping period, which was thirty days. We sent letters to stakeholders, one hundred and twelve stakeholders, including agencies, landowners surrounding the Washington Navy Yard, agencies, nonprofit organizations. We published notices in the Washington Post that we were holding this public scoping period to try to seek input on the proposed action, the alternatives that we're, that we were looking at to evaluate to the proposed action. We held two public meetings during this scoping, scoping period. We did have quite a bit more participation in those meetings than we get for a lot of our actions, which was, which was great because that's exactly what we were looking for. We received fourteen comments during those meetings and then follow-on emails and letters that we received. And then we took that information and we used it as we were developing the draft environmental impact statement. And that document was also released for public review for a fifty-day comment period. There are required time periods through the National Environmental Policy Process, and we did actually extend the required time period to try to make sure that we were reaching people. Same thing as with scoping, we published the notice in the Federal Register and in the Washington Post. We had information available on the project website that people could go and view to get more information about the project. We held two additional public meetings during this time in November of last year. Through that process, we received seventy-nine comments, again via email, mail, and in public comments during those two public meetings. A lot of the comments that we received were about the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail and how important of a community resource that is. A lot of the, the comments were in support of the opportunity to make very necessary repairs to that community resource because it, it is sorely in need of it, and this project does offer a pretty big opportunity to do that. So we took into account all of those comments that we received as we were preparing the final EIS. And then that was released again for public review earlier this year for a thirty-day period. It was available on the website. We posted notices in the Washington Post to let people know that it was available. There was additional information. We only received one letter from the U.S. EPA based on the final EIS, and it was just in general support of the project and that their comments on the draft had been addressed. And then we used all of that information to sign the Record of Decision, which completes the NEPA process and signals the Secretary of the Navy's intent to move forward with the preferred alternative, which is what we're here talking about today. Do you have a question?
I'm gonna let you finish first.
Okay, I'm almost done, I promise. So the intent, we did identify through the, the various environmental impact analysis that there are potential noise impacts, especially to Van Ness Elementary School during construction on the E-parcels. So we had already initiated outreach with the elementary school. We agreed to continue coordinating with them through construction on the E-parcels, which isn't really the focus of today. And then we will continue coordination with DDOT and the Eleventh Street Bridge Park and the Protected Bike Lane Project on Eleventh Street to ensure. um, on Eleventh Street to ensure that this development can work seamlessly with, um, with all of those projects. Um, so, and I'll pause there.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to follow up and just say, oh, it sounds like you did a yeoman's job on, um, notice. Um, and I just want to make sure, now you have one more person, Ms. Monroe, for, for whatever reason, didn't, wasn't able to participate in. So I know you said you do homeowners associations and everything else, and then you advertised in the newspapers and you'd reach out to elected officials so that they can notify their constituents because they're going to have better, um, um, access to their constituents and whatnot. So just please make sure, and this is for everybody, for every case, um, that may impact our communities. Um, just make sure we go above and beyond what we're actually required to do to solicit and elicit that community input. And so now you will have access to Ms. Monroe's information as well, so that she will be in, kept in the loop. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, I, I think, um, Commissioner Dixon, um, Captain Tobias has had his hand up for some time. Could I have him go next? And then I'll, okay, thank you, um, Captain Tobias, and I want to thank Vice Chair Hewitt and Ms. Tompkins' flag for their, um, discussion.
Yes, thank you for that opportunity. So just to reinforce, going forward, it is very important to the Navy, it's very important to me that we incorporate the community and we will take this as a learning opportunity, as our ability to expand our outreach. Um, to make sure that we incorporate as many voices as we can going forward. So understand we, you know, as, as, um, Nick laid out, we, we went through some steps to communicate. But for whatever reason, it didn't get to all the areas it needs to get to, and we'll take that as a learning opportunity, uh, going forward. And, and our next step, as stated, is now to do analysis to work with the Eleventh Street Bridge Project. And we'll leverage their experience with the community as well, because they, they have, um, some inroads there that we can take advantage of to make sure we get to as many community members as possible. Over.
Thank you very much, Captain Tobias. Appreciate those comments. And now Commissioner Dixon.
First of all, I want to, uh, join in with my Commissioner, uh, Hewitt on her concerns. Uh, but I want to make another broader statement. Uh, this comes from a very long history with Navy Yard. When I was still a reserve officer, and now retired oh-six. Uh, I helped at the Navy to look for vendors. One of my assignments was to try to bring vendors into that facility when they first decided to place more significant presence in that area. And, uh, we had some success. I hope a lot of success in doing that, but that's a long time ago. I do know the Navy. I have, I really have a great deal of appreciation for the Navy bringing so much into one place. I mean, it's a densely populated, densely, uh, uh, collection of the Navy's head headquarters, major, major commands. And they have been, I think, trying to work always with the community on this, these kind of things. So I hope it will continue that. Uh, but I do think that you're always going to have some folks who feel like they kind of didn't get a chance to, uh, to be heard. And, uh, we need to try to limit that as much as possible, and I believe that, that this will be done, and I think we have time for that. Uh, but again, it's a very major, I mean, we have the entire major leadership of the Navy that has decided, elected many years ago to come into our community, not on, not on the R side, Anacostia River East side, but at least on our river. And, uh, I think that's very important. And the link between Anacostia, east of the river, Anacostia R, as I call it, Anacostia River East is significant. Because most of the people who worked at the Navy Yard when they were making parts and they were actually building parts for submarines lived in our community, in Union Town. So it's, there's a lot of changes here and I'm, I think it's going to move forward well. And I, 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 I like the idea that, 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 that there is this added attention to trying to get the community engaged in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Before I ask for a motion, are there any other questions for the presenters today? Or those who provided testimony? I have, uh, I see a show of hands here, um, Vice Chair Hewitt.
I, I, I'm ready. I have a motion.
Oh, okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Unless I, I don't see any other hands up and no one's speaking up. So if you're ready for the motion, um, ready to present a motion, please.
I am. I, first, I'd like to thank Mr. Webb. I think it was a very thorough presentation. I'd like to thank him maybe, um, and, and also for, with your amended, um, report with, uh, to include, um, the information that you put on the pages, I think it was four and eleven, um, with regard to building bridges. And, and, uh, it's so important, and so I'm thankful for that. And with the additional presentation today and the testimony we've heard from Mr. Krantz, uh, Mr. Freeman, um, Captain Tobias, Pastor Payne, um, and Ms. Monroe and Mr. Moten, um, I think we have a process to move forward. And with that, I, and the amended comments, I will move approval of the amended comments regarding the Navy Yard, um, Southeast Corner Master Plan.
There's been a motion? And a motion in a second to approve the comments on the draft Washington Navy Yard Southeast Corner Master Plan. Is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, Ms. Costa? Oh, I apologize. We have to take comments. And I was going to start with Commissioner Kozar. Did you have something else to say, Vice Chair Hewitt?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to begin with Commissioner Kozar for deliberation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to, um, those who testified and to our, uh, presenters on behalf of the Navy. And, uh, certainly to our staff for, uh, preparing a excellent presentation. And I, uh, my comments are that the master plan generally fits with the district's vision for this area. It's defined by comprehensive plan policy, uh, other than providing too little affordable housing, which I'll say a little bit more about. And the view shed issue that's been referenced by the individuals who testified, the master plan is an important step in the right direction. I do want to take issue with the staff report characterization of the development program envisioned by the master plan as a solely federal project. Uh, to the contrary, with the exception of a shared parking garage, it is entirely private development containing no federal public buildings. And as a private development, it's subject to the district zoning regulations. And the zoning regulations would dictate that this private development should provide up to twenty percent of the residential square footage as inclusionary units, not the eight percent that are proffered in the master plan. And further, this development should go through the robust process that's public, uh, provided by the District Zoning Commission. And that would be expected for a private development project of this magnitude, this size. For the past year, district agencies have been working very closely with the Navy and the developers to keep the master plan amendment going and moving forward and to develop proposed zoning consistent with the district regulations and the comprehensive plan. And I understand fully that today we're voting on the staff comments on the master plan and not the master plan itself. I'm largely supportive of the staff comments in the E D R and really thankful to the staff for their work on this project. However, to the extent that the master plan purports to be a substitute for district zoning, I would be inclined to vote against the plan approval when it comes to the commission in the future. And so those are, those are my comments and thanks again to the staff.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kozar, for your input. Um, next, we will hear from Commissioner McMahon, please. I think you're on mute, uh, Commissioner McMahon.
Let's try again.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Goodman, and, uh, again, thanks to, uh, uh, critically the N C P C staff for their, their detailed report recommendations. And I think especially their pivot over the last two to three days to reflect on some of the issues that have come to light um, as this final report, um, which I'm looking at, kind of follows along with what was originally published in the E I S. And we've talked about the, the problems with communications, uh, with that, um, and how it discusses the use of the property. That being said, I, I think that the modifications that the, uh, Executive Director has recommended to reflect on those issues of the Eleventh Street Bridge are, are critical and important to, um, uh, moving forward with the project. And so I'll be supporting, uh, the motion to approve the, uh, staff comments on the E D R, um, as we move forward. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham, please.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, uh, for the presentation. Um, it was really well done. Um, this is a project that the perk service has also been following for some time, um, due to its relationship with, um, J-Bab over on the other side of the river. Um, so we appreciate this project coming forward, um. And have, in being an N H L, um, also, uh, we have participated widely in the Section one oh-six process and feel that it has come to, um, a good place. Um, I too would encourage, uh, additional coordination with the Eleventh Street Bridge Project as that has been ongoing for so very long and offers a lot of opportunities to the community as a whole. Um, uh, and I, I really think that's it. Um, I appreciate the work that has been done, um, and look forward to uh, seeing more from this project.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo, please.
Uh, good afternoon. Thank you. Um, I, uh, I really enjoyed the presentation. I'm, uh, certainly su- supportive of the work that's been done and continues to be done on this project. I wanted to say, um, uh, just very briefly, I appreciate, um, Commissioner Kozar's comments also about, um, the, uh, relationship and potential distinction between, um, the master plan and, um, zoning issues and requirements. So something we need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Thank you very much. Um, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Hewitt?
Um, yes, the only thing I'd like to add to my prior comments, as I too, um, understand and appreciate and thank, uh, Commissioner Kozar for her comments with regard to the district government and the process there. I imagine there's, this may be an area that, uh, we will ne- need our general counsel to, to brief us on it at a later date, and I just wanted to flag that. Um, so that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Um, Commissioner Green.
Thank you. Now, I appreciate the, the thoroughness of the preparation of this project and also of the staff's review and presentation of it. Um, and, um, especially with the late additions. And just as, 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 um, some of my fellow commissioners have done, just wanted to reinforce the importance of the coordination with the Bridge Committee and that analysis of the view to determine its viability. And, um, and, uh, appreciate Commissioner Kozar's comments on the importance of affordable housing in this project and the, the further investigation of, of that. So, um, thank you all very much. And again, thank staff for their presentation tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Thank you very much. Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I'm, I, we, we've seen this movie before a little bit at G S A. So I'd like to have a robust conversation about that, the, the, um, the, the, the zoning discussion. But not today, because we don't need to do it today. Um, I have a question, though. Does, do, can we hear the Navy say what, as to whether, I, I, my understanding was that the Navy had a, a, a a pretty significant looming deadline. And the comments require this further analysis. And can, can we, can we just ask if it's feasible for the analysis to be done in, in time for the Navy's deadlines? Or maybe I have this wrong, but I, I'd like to hear some, some, an, um, assessment as to the feasibility of getting this analysis done for the, for the view shed.
Commissioner Wright, do you want to hear from staff or from the Navy?
Well, I guess from the Navy because they're the ones who can tell us whether or not they can get it done in time. And am I imagining this deadline or, or, um, I, I, I guess I, I'm, I'm looking for them to tell us that these comments, um, they can act on them.
Okay, um, yes.
Meaningfully.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wright. And it loo- it looks like Captain Tobias is willing to respond.
Yes, to answer your question, we do have a deadline, but we have already began conversations with Red Brick so that we can, you know, incorporate these comments and act on them. So we're working together to adjust our deadline within reason so that we can do what needs to be done. Um, and I'll defer if Nick has any other a- additional comments to that, but that's our overall position. Over.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain Tobias. Commissioner Wright, do you have additional comments? That sounded like some good news there.
Yeah, no, that, that's it. So I, I wasn't clear if, if they're, they had more to say. Nick, do you have more to say? No, okay. Um, so, 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 so the E D R as amended that the, on pages eleven and fourteen stipulates that this further analysis shall happen definitively, correct? Is that, it, it, that's a staff question, Diane?
Yep, that's correct. We are, we are requiring the Navy and, uh, Red Brick, uh, to work with building bridges. That we want to hold a meeting and have a discussion and the, have the proper analysis, uh, to look at. So that we're all looking at the same thing.
Okay, and, and finally, one last point of clarity. Is there a timeline assigned to the analysis, the completion of the analysis?
It's as soon as the Navy wants to do it or can do it.
Okay. All right. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Important questions. Uh, Commissioner Dixon?
Nope, no further questions or comments.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Um, Commissioner Cash?
Alright, thanks. Um, so I want to associate myself with a lot of the comments. I'm, I'm hopeful that once we get this analysis that, that everyone's on the same page and that it can be amicable or just getting everyone on the same page is really important. I think it's just a lack of data is, is what everyone's really worried about right now. So I think that N C P C has done a great job in facilitating this in the past, especially with massing and all that stuff when we did the height study. So I'm hopeful that everyone that will be in the room and talking has the right set of tools and will have the right information to have that analysis. I did want to mention, um, one thing that I was kind of surprised that the E D R didn't really go into and I'm hopeful we have more information by the time this comes back to us. We didn't have a lot of information about transportation down there. I mean, we, there was a lot of analysis of all the parking spaces and all that. But, um, it's not a lot of analysis of how we're going to get people down here. So one of the things about this project, to my understanding, um, is it's, it's going to have, like, restaurants, retail, all that great stuff that we have on riverfronts everywhere else. Um, but this is a really difficult place to get to. And there's only one way in or out of this entire complex, and it's going to be at Eleventh and O Street, unless you want to walk along the Riverwalk all the way. So I'm a little worried about what impacts this is going to have on traffic down here. If there are people riding in cars. Um, there are three bus lines that run by here, but they are very low-quality bus stops right now. And given the fact that this might not go through the traditional D C-type zoning process where those kinds of things would be discussed, I'm hopeful that the district, Red Brick, the Navy can come together, maybe look at, like, do we put a higher-quality bus shelter or even a low-quality bus shelter there instead of just a sign? Um, because if we're expecting people both east and west of the river to be able to get here and take advantage of these new public amenities, I just want to make sure that we're not creating a, even though it might have electric chargers and all that, I want to make sure we're not creating a vehicle-intensive place. Because literally there's just a, a two-lane road currently at Eleventh and O that gets you in and out of this entire site. Uh, it'll look like we're in quite a few units. So I'm hopeful that, that maybe there's a little bit more discussion when this comes back to us about some of those external things that, that maybe don't get considered when it's a Navy project because they're worried about employees. And here we're going to have people come living on federally leased land. So, um, I'm just hopeful that we have a little bit more information about that next time, um, as well as just looking at the security perimeter. And are we going to get rid of these walls and have this integrate with Eleventh Street in the community? So those are just some of the things I'm, I'm hoping to hear about by the time this comes back to us.
Wow, thank you, Commissioner Cash. That's very, very thorough. Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation and the, the comments. I have no other comments to make myself. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, I, did I miss someone here? Oh, I see Commissioner Giacchetti, you're in the next line. Uh, would, do you have any comment?
I, no comments, but just like everyone, you know, thank you very much for the straight presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Giacchetti. Um, I have to say, um, uh, this has been a very thorough and, and, um, and helpful conversation today. I think deliberation- this has been a very thorough and 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 helpful conversation today. I think deliberations are very meaningful today on this issue. Clearly, the this staff made a phenomenal presentation along with our colleagues from the Navy and their associates at Red Brick. I think the staff was very nimble and flexible and astute in directing and connecting with people before the meeting to make sure that we were able to bring this amended, these amended recommendations to the fore. And I feel very confident after hearing from staff and from Captain Tobias and Nick and from all these folks who took the time and 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 took the, you know, made made the effort to come in and provide testimony today to tell us how important this is and tell us more about the project on the Anacostia and and the bridging these these two sides of the river. I personally work for a city. And I've worked on as a in a nonprofit for Mississippi River Riverfront Development with neighborhoods. I've also worked as a city employee in a neighborhood that flooded as we resurrected a creek that had been buried a hundred years ago. And I cannot tell you enough how much I appreciate the comments today because it's when neighborhoods come together and when communities come together. And even when we fail as or as working city officials to hear all constituents when we take the time to go back and and have added input, that the project is even better and the community is even stronger. So I I really was moved today by the presentation, the thoroughness, the and the testimony provided. And I, as a city person, I'm also I hear the zoning issue and I know that that'll be discussed as well. But just a really, I want to commend the commission on on the on their comments too. So I just thought it was very robust and I look forward to enjoying this newly energized and and renewed part of town as they experience a much hoped for renaissance. So congratulations to all the participants and hoping for great news in the next at the next meeting or in the near future as we address the the concerns raised today. So those are my comments on this. And so now, Ms. Costa, unless there are any further comments or questions, we're going to move to confirm the motion and the second and and take the vote, please.
Certainly, the motion was made by Vice Chair Hewlett with the second by Commissioner Dixon. And with that, Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Giacchetti?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Moving on, Agenda Item 6B is to approve comments on the concept plans for the small cell guidelines update for the standalone poles. And Ms. Free is going to be making a presentation.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me and see my presentation?
Yes.
Yes. Well, good afternoon, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The District Department of Transportation, or DDOT, submitted concept plans for the design of a standalone small cell pole for your review and comment. As the lead agency and liaison with the cellular providers, DDOT worked with NCPC and other federal and local agencies to develop a design for the pole pursuant to the small cell guidelines that were approved in 2019. Before I dive dive into the design of the pole, I'll provide a brief overview of what small cell technology is and summarize the district's small cell guidelines. Cellular companies are deploying small cell infrastructure, a lower powered antenna technology to reduce data traffic on roof mounted equipment and larger cell towers. Carriers can use can install single equipment for their own use, while some can co-locate on the same pole through hoteling. This new technology requires significant infrastructure that can affect the aesthetics and function of public streets and spaces as the antennas need to be closer to our devices. As you can see here, there are multiple applications for this infrastructure, such as attaching to existing streetlights or utility poles or employing standalone pole installations. Small cell facilities are generally located on poles between thirty thirty and thirty five feet in height. This height is necessary to accommodate signal transmission along the street corridor. Antenna equipment, cabinetry, and other elements are also provided in varying combinations, all of which have the potential to impact the character and the function of the streetscape. And this infrastructure is not invisible. So early on, NCPC, the Commission of Fine Arts, and the District State Historic Preservation Office realized that the design of this infrastructure within the district needs to be well coordinated and reviewed. We have some examples here of small cell poles that are deploying in other cities across the country. Other places have attached different types of street infrastructure to the small cell pole, such as streetlights or traffic signals. Whereas we realized early on that this needs to be its own piece of infrastructure and designed as minimally as possible to reduce impacts to significant view sheds. The commission has been involved with the development of the district's small cell guidelines since the initiative began in 2018. It provided comments on the draft guidelines twice before approving the guidelines in March of 2019. And as I mentioned today, the commission is providing comments on the conceptual design of the standalone small cell pole. The guidelines cover several topics, including preferred locations for small cells and sighting within the streetscape. In all cases, the guidelines state a preference for mounting small cell antennas to existing streetlights or utility poles whenever possible. And using standalone poles when the use of existing infrastructure is insufficient or absent. Foremost, the guidelines state that no small cell infrastructure requiring a standalone pole is to be installed until the pole has been reviewed and adopted by the district's Public Space Committee, which will follow review by NCPC and the Commission of Fine Arts. The commission's comments on the guidelines were primarily concerned with impacts to the character and function of the public realm within the federal core, including antenna facility placement, spacing, and pole design and attachment. The commission's comments were incorporated into the approved guidelines, including a provision for the design of the standalone small cell pole to be developed by a stakeholder group and approved separately. I would like to note that the federal interest in the design and placement of small cells within district rights of way is limited to the federal core due to the presence of unique federal and cultural resources that are resources with dividing characteristics of the nation's most important public realm and buildings. Therefore, NCPC was also involved in defining the review process for installation of small cells within the district's rights of way and developed a federal core interest area map that was adopted with the guidelines. The federal core interest area map balances the need for adequate cellular coverage with visual impacts to important federal buildings and national parks and the areas surrounding the National Mall. Staff prepared the map, which identifies acceptable small self facility locations adjacent to federal property. This map excludes the National Mall itself, Constitution, Independence, and Pennsylvania avenues. A separate analysis of standalone small cell poles within these areas is being led by the National Park Service in coordination with the Department of Homeland Security to address cellular capacity during large events. A design for a standalone small cell pole in the National Mall area has not yet been developed. In developing the map, staff's goal was to allow for small cell coverage across the federal interest area and to increase the spacing of the facilities. Staff took about four weeks to develop a map of potential small cell facilities, which resulted in an average of one pole per block face for those under four hundred and fifty feet in length and two poles for longer blocks. This is an example of how NCPC's study influenced the location of small cells within the federal core. Here is an existing view looking south along Tenth Street between Pennsylvania Avenue and Constitution Avenue with the National Museum of Nat Natural History in the distance. And here is a rendering of small cell poles placed in the streetscape with multiple poles on each side of the street. This reflects the spacing originally proposed by the carriers prior to NCPC's review. And here are the poles that were eliminated per the federal core interest area map. Three poles were eliminated and three remained so that coverage could still be provided. In this case, prominent poles in the view shed and those blocking a bus stop and pedestrian access were eliminated. Regarding the review process, any facility location identified on the federal core interest area map does not need further review by NCPC. If a carrier seeks an exception from the guidelines within the streets identified on the map or adjacent to any federal property, the exception request will necessitate NCPC's review and concurrence prior to the initiation of permit review by DDOT. Further, any proposals to move or alter temporary or permanent security elements along or adjacent to federal property requires NCPC's review prior to submitting to DDOT for a permit. And that concludes my summary of the small cell guidelines. Now moving on to the purpose of this presentation today and the commission's review, which is the design of the standalone small cell pole. As intended by the guidelines, DDOT has worked with NCPC, the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts, other district agencies, and the carriers over the last year to develop a design for the standalone small cell poles, which I will now discuss. The total height of the proposed pole with the carrier equipment is approximately thirty feet. The base of the pole measures five foot six and six inches tall and twenty inches in diameter. The pole tapers from eight inches in diameter at the base to three point eight inches in diameter at the top. The small cell antennas will be mounted at the top of the pole, which measure approximately four feet in height. All equipment associated with the antennas will be concealed within the base of the pole. The pole itself transitions to the base with a decorative shroud that is similar in style to the shrouds found on Washington Globe Streetlights. Overall, staff comments favorably on the tall slim profile of the standalone pole with a tapered post decorative transition shroud and equipment concealed within the base. Staff supports the proposed approach to use a single pole design that can accommodate different cellular carrier antennas. Here we have illustrations of the pole with each of the three carrier small cell antennas mounted to the top. You can see that a generally consistent height of approximately thirty feet is achieved from the ground level to the top of the antenna. And here we have a few images that show the progression of the pole design. Originally, a design with a wide short base was proposed to the working group who asked the carriers to refine the design to achieve a slim tall base with a tapered pole. Overall, staff appreciates the efforts of the District Department of Transportation and the cell carriers to address the working group's comments on the design of the standalone pole. The submission materials include illustrations of district streetlights and other streetscape furniture such as trash receptacles and bicycle sharing stations for comparison of scale and aesthetics. You can see here the diameter of the standard trash receptacle is twenty five inches compared with the diameter of the pole's base, which is twenty inches. This illustration compares the base width and total height of the proposed standalone pole with existing district streetlight typologies. The scale of the base and the overall height of the standalone pole at approximately thirty feet are more consistent with Cobra headlights and traffic control boxes, which are used less frequently in pedestrian friendly streetscapes. And therefore, staff requests that the applicant evaluate if the pole pole and base heights can be reduced further to a more pedestrian friendly scale. The submission package also includes photo simulations that place the proposed standalone pole within the streetscape at various locations throughout the district. Here we have a view at Eighteenth Street Northwest with the proposed pole located in the image on the right. And a view at Thirteenth and S Streets Northwest, again to the right in the image on the right with the pole shown here in gray. And lastly, two views here with the poles located near Capitol Street Southeast. You may have noticed that the photo simulations illustrate some of the standalone poles with a black color and others with the gray color. The District State Historic Preservation Office had requested that the poles be gray to match the historic color of streetlights more accurately. While the photo simulations are helpful to provide some context, staff believes reviewing a prototype fixture is critically important for stakeholders and the public to understand how the standalone poles will fit within the streetscape. Therefore, staff requests DDOT work with the cell carriers to install a full size prototype of the standalone pole and a location that is identified on the federal core interest area map with the exact location to be determined in coordination with the working group. With regard to the prototype, staff also requests that it is installed with the largest proposed antenna equipment for no less than thirty days prior to submission of the preliminary plans. And requests the prototype is used to evaluate the color of the poles with both black and gray to be considered. Staff also notes that NCPC and the working group may recommend refinements to the design of the pole following the prototype review. And this concludes my presentation. The executive director's recommendations are listed here and have been incorporated into my presentation. Myself and several members of the applicant team, including the District Department of Transportation, are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Free. And do commissioners have any questions at this time? Any questions for Ms. Free?
I I do, actually. So so after I was listening to the CFA review of of this proposal, and one of the commissioners asked for some further refinement on the base. And I don't DDOT was not allowed to respond. What's the status of that comment? I mean, are they continuing to look at it? And maybe I should say I'm asking because I think it is just enough already. I mean, the 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 original, the original prototype for these things, you know, had these god awful trunks and, you know, or vaults that were going to have to be part and parcel of this whole thing. I I think, you know, it's it it I think they've done a pretty admirable job, not only with the design, but also herding the cats, which are the carriers who resist cooperating with one another. So I'm I'm my my question has to do is do with, did the CFA comments result in a DDOT decision to revisit the overall profile of the pole?
Sure. Thanks for the question. I may pass this off to Ms. Kelsey Bridges to respond from DDOT.
Hi, thank you. We're we are still looking into exactly the history of kind of how we came up with that design and also looking into the integrity and feasibility of the pole as since all of this information, it the pole or the technology is and the pole is designed to encapsulate and or include all of, excuse me, let me just take a step back. I was like, you know, it's been a day. The the poles are designed to carry the weight of all of the technology that is in there for each carrier. And each carrier has different equipment that is located in different positions. It may some may be on top of each other, some need different spatial requirements. So this design that is here really does include it accommodates all of those differences and also is very specific in terms of like the weight and the structural needs of the pole to make sure that it can withstand any kind of, you know, like, just like we do with our light poles to make sure that, you know, like, if they can withstand any type of strong winds or anything like that. So that is something that we're still looking into, and I don't have a response on whether we'll be able to accommodate all of those requests from CFA. One of the things that I will note that I mentioned in that meeting was that adding, there was a request to add something kind of larger to the base to, right now, the design does have that more streamlined cylindrical all the way from the the top of that of the cabinet to the sidewalk. And in order for us to add the the request to add some more texture, if you will, to that design, it does make the base wider. And we're trying to, we're, the goal was to try and minimize the size of the base, which is why we kind of ended up with the smallest design possible. So, yeah, so that is something I just will highlight. Yeah.
Yeah. So my hope is that you're going to ignore those comments because I think for that reason, it would make the base bigger. And, you know, it's a utility pole. Let's with emphasis on the word utility. I mean, they aren't supposed to be standalone beautiful objects. They are. They serve a modern purpose. And the profile and the silhouette is about as and the profile and the silhouette is about as slim down as we're going to get it. And if the idea is for it to disappear, why do we need ruffles and flourishes? That's that that that's what I didn't get at all, especially if it's going to increase the size. So I don't know. I mean, D-Dot, you don't always get a lot of kudos, but I would like to say I think you guys did a pretty good job on this.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bridges, and thank you, Commissioner Wright, Commissioner Stidham.
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair. I'm not sure if this is a question for Ms. Free or Ms. Bridges related to the pole. I think my understanding is that it's a it's a common pole, the common height, but that each carrier will have a different topper per se. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there in your development of this pole, was there any work or investigation into the ability for more than one carrier to occupy one pole? So that you you were, you were having at least maybe two carriers on one pole? And how did that change the pole, or is it not possible?
Yes, I'll start, but I think Ms. Bridges or one of the carrier representatives may be able to add. I would add that that was discussed in the working group. However, to keep the pole, the profile as slim and as minimal as possible, the approach to have one carrier at a time or on each pole was really the best option. And I don't know if Ms. Bridges or one of the carrier representatives may have something to add, add to that.
Just echoing Ms. Free, the in order, what we're showing it that within the antennas that are shown does include like the smallest variation of those those carriers can provide. I will defer to the carriers if if any of them are providing more than one element on a pole. But if if we were to consider that, you could imagine that the scale of of the antenna would be much larger and and very likely the pole to be able to accommodate the weight and the proportions as well. But there are other folks from the MLA carriers on that can speak to the integrity of the pole.
Thank you, Ms. Bridges and Ms. Free. Commissioner Stidham, do you have any further questions?
No, just swirling that around in my head as service continues, our study on small cell and roles and carriers and co-location and minimalization and so I appreciate both Ms. Free and Ms. Bridges responses. Thank you. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions from commissioners for our presenters today, Ms. Free, Ms. Bridges, or any of the other carrier representatives? No further questions, hearing none? Then is there a motion to approve comments on the concept plans for small cell guideline update for standalone poles?
Or second, I'll take to the second.
Okay, I believe that was Commissioner Wright who made the motion and Vice Chair Hewlett who seconded. Ms. Coster, or no, I'm sorry. We will start now with deliberations, and I'm going to begin with Commissioner Green. This is deliberations on the small cell guidelines update motion to approve comments.
Oh, thank you. No, and I appreciate all the work that went into this. It's such an important part of the streetscape to keep this important part of technology streamlined, and we all, we all want to use our cell phones too much. And yet we don't want this to dominate our our experience of urban places. And so I really appreciate the hard work that went into this. I know it's the deceptively slim report for the amount of work that must have gone in behind the scenes. So I appreciate this very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. And now we're going to hear from Commissioner Wright, please.
Yeah, I just would also like to say, I this it is a slim report, but it it in the sense that, well, I mean, it doesn't need to be luminous because the 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 if if anybody remembers sort of the the original proposals were the stuff of pearl clutching and, you know, a case of the vapors. So it's come a long way. They've done a really good job, you know, listening and cooperating and understanding what how important it is. I mean, I I have always used the example of the Department of Commerce, which we own, and it is on a, it occupies an entire block of fifteen hundred linear foot block. And several of these poles are going to be necessary just on that one block, not several, but more than, more than one, more than two. And so it's really important that they disappear as much as they can. And and at when we first looked at these things, they were oh, really tough to think about. So here we are, and we do need our cell phones, so.
Thank you. Thank you, right. Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Dixon? I'll come back to Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash?
I just want to echo a lot of the comments from Commissioner Wright. So I mean, a few of us have been around here long enough to remember those first few submissions when they came to us. And I hate to say this, but maybe one of the best things that ever happened was that we stopped deliberating on this in 2019 and took a breath for three years and let the technology catch up. Because it's actually my hope that, given that we put a pause on this, we forced all the carriers to actually become a little bit more creative. So four or five years ago, we were told we can't vault any of this stuff. It can't go underground. Technologically, it's just not possible. I walk by one of these Verizon small cell towers every day that's just mounted to a standard light pole, and suddenly there was a little vault box in the ground. Like, it's not like, all these things that we were told was impossible suddenly became possible because we actually forced them to be creative and use the technology. So it's actually my hope that we won't need as many of these standalone poles, because I mean, they're they're going to be bigger and uglier than their vaulted cousins. But and I would just say that that in discussions about making for more allowance for space, I think we need to remember it's on the technology companies to keep shrinking their technology, and hopefully we can come back at another time, or maybe in five, ten years, and we don't even need these big ones. And as they're replaced, we can shrink them back down. So I'm glad that we kind of held firm and that that NCPC, the district, all the stakeholders were able to work this out. And I think get a lot more ingenuity on the current light poles that we already have to hopefully minimize the number that we'll need. I'm looking right at the Department of Commerce right now. To the extent that those traffic lights can, they can dig a little hole and put it down there. We've we've done some good by by being very deliberate upon this. So thanks for all the work on this, and thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. No additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Chigetti?
No additional comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Cozart?
Thanks to the staff for their presentation and the work on this, and I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Cozart. Commissioner McMahon?
Yeah, I like to associate myself with the comments of the other commissioners so far, and I'm glad to hear we're not going to have vapors anymore on this. I'm glad we got this done before sixty rolls along. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham?
I would echo, I would echo the comments of the other commissioners, that I was in those meetings when there was pearl clutching and talks of giant sequoias along the streets and and concerned with pole numbers and pole heights and girth and and everything. As we continue our study, I really do appreciate the work that D-Dot has done here. They did, really did a yeoman's lift to get it this far. A lot of very long meetings and having long conversations about poles is not the greatest thing to be talking about for months on months. So just greatly appreciated of the work that D-Dot has done and to get this far. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo?
I echo most of the comments that I've heard and, you know, really embrace some of these comments about about the effort was, the effort that was made, both in the sense of being, you know, inclusive and timely to to get this done and get it and get it to us at this meeting. It's, it may not seem like much to a lot of people, but it's you know, anybody who, you know, who knows these technologies understands that, you know, it's a challenge. And it looks like, it looks like they're they're meeting the challenge that has been asked of them. So much appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner, Vice Chair Hewlett?
Not much to add. I would echo the sentiments of everyone who's spoken thus far. Thank you.
And I too, thank you, Vice Chair Hewlett. I too want to echo those. I I worried early on with early iterations of what these small cell pools would look like, that we'd have to redefine the monumental core because we were going to be competing with monuments, I was afraid, you know, with these ubiquitous power or ubiquitous cell poles. So I'm I'm very pleased with the design, and I'm grateful for all the work that went into this. Thank you, Ms. Free, and thank you, Ms. Bridges and D-Dot for your work on on this, on this necessary utility. Okay, so if there are no further comments or questions, Ms. Cluster, can you confirm the motion in the second and call the roll, please?
Certainly. The motion was made by Commissioner Wright and seconded by Vice Chair Hewlett. And with that, where am I? Commissioner Cozart?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewlett?
Yes.
Chair Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon? Commissioner Dixon? All right, Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Epstein.
And Commissioner Chigetti?
Epstein.
Hey, and I'll just and I see
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Coming back to you.
Well, thank you. That motion clearly carried. Moving on to it, thank you all. And moving on to agenda item number six C is to approve comments on concept plans for the Taft Bridge pedestrian rail improvements. And we will have a presentation on this by Mr. Webb.
Thank you. Are you able to see the first slide?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, good afternoon again, Chair Goodman and members of the commission. The District Department of Transportation, D-Dot, is seeking the commission's comments on concept plans to alter the railings at the William Howard Taft Bridge along Connecticut Avenue as it crosses Rock Creek Parkway in northwest Washington, DC. The purpose of the project is to develop a suicide deterrent barrier system that reduces the potential of suicide attempts, minimizes impacts to the existing historic bridge fabric and surrounding view sheds, and provides a deterrent barrier or replacement design that is compatible with the bridge aesthetics. The District Office of the Chief Medical Examiner data showed that twenty-six bridge-related suicides occurred in Washington, DC between January first of 2010 and June first of 2022, of which thirteen fatalities occurred at the Taft Bridge. Here is a map showing the bridge's location in northwest Washington, which connects the Colorama and the Woodley Park neighborhoods. As this is a concept review, the focus of today's presentation and analysis is to receive commission comments and feedback prior to preparation of a more detailed preliminary submission. In this case, the focus of the review is understanding the appropriateness of the project for the site and context, understanding any particularly unique or complex issues that need to be addressed, and identifying any stakeholders that may need to be further involved. As such, in today's presentation, I will identify comments for the commission to adopt as guidance for further project development. Here are some other images of the bridge as it appears today. The Taft Bridge was constructed between eighteen ninety-seven and nineteen oh seven and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The bridge has been altered previously, most recently in nineteen ninety-five, when the bridge deck and sidewalks were altered and the concrete piers and the metal railings replaced. D-Dot and their design team hosted several meetings with review agencies to evaluate different approaches to alter the Taft Bridge's railings in response to the project goals. The agencies agreed that the design options should avoid visual impacts from the Rock Creek Parkway and discourage options that would require alterations to the outside of the bridge, such as netting or installing railings on the outside of the current railings. The agencies also agreed that a preferred approach should minimize impacts to the historic bridge's appearance. The applicant shared that in order to meet the project goals, the design criteria for any options would need to include that the ideal barrier height is eight feet above any foothold with height reductions considered for barriers that are curved at the top or angled inward. Maximize finger clearance to prevent handholds by reducing projections to less than one inch. Minimize horizontal, excuse me, minimize horizontal element projections that could be used for footholds. For example, anti-climb facade elements tend to slope any horizontal setback at sixty degrees or more. And in regards to materials for the alterations, consider metal picket fencing or metal mesh. D-Dot submitted three design options for the commission comment today. They include option one, which adds glazed panels. Option two, you see in the middle, which adds wire mesh. And option three on the right, which replaces and reconstructs the existing concrete elements, such as the piers and the metal railing. Let's start with looking at option one, which includes the installation of eight-foot-tall glazed panels on the inside of the existing railing. The applicant indicated that for security and safety, as well as anti-graffiti defense, an optically clear polyester film could be included on the glazed panels. To address bird safety concerns, a film with UV stripe coating could be added to visually signal an impending barrier to birds and help prevent collisions. According to the submission, this approach generally has an acceptable avoidance index score from the American Bird Conservancy. Staff finds that option one may be a reversible treatment that minimizes physical impacts to the historic character of the bridge and is distinctly contemporary in its materiality. Further, the paneling would clearly be a modern addition due to the use of the contemporary materials. However, despite the options for films and other finishes, the potential remains for vandalism and increased maintenance due to cleaning. Further, despite its transparency, in real-world application, glass remains highly visible and reflective. As such, staff finds the use of glass panels would require cleaning and maintenance, may be less transparent under many lighting conditions, and will be vulnerable to vandalism. And therefore, staff recommends that option one be dismissed from further consideration. Next is option two, which includes the addition of welded wire mesh inside the existing railing. The mesh could be galvanized carbon steel plate barb size of one or two millimeters with an outer coating. According to the submission, the mesh is extremely difficult to cut or to climb. Like the first option, staff recommends that the commission find this approach may also be a reversible treatment that could minimize physical impacts to the historic character of the bridge and is distinctly contemporary in its material and design. However, staff recommends that the commission also find that the mesh material as rendered in the submission does not contribute to an inviting or comfortable pedestrian experience. According to the applicant, additional types of architectural mesh could be considered, particularly those that are finer in scale than a welded wire mesh. As such, the density and transparency could be further refined. Other components, such as the stanchions, the frames, and color could be modified. Given the potential for further Given the potential for further improvements to this approach, it may be worth further exploration to see if the potential impacts to the pedestrian experience could be addressed. Therefore, staff suggests that the commission recommend advancing option two for further development and request the applicant provide the following. Additional information on the design standard and deterrence level necessary for the mesh material, because the standard and deterrence level have direct implications on the mesh density and transparence. And additional information on the size, the number and types of stanchions needed, color options, and any measure that may help make the mesh less visibly obtrusive. The applicant should also provide additional examples of mesh use on other historic bridges. The final option for comment is option three, which includes the removal of the existing concrete elements and the metal railings. They would be replaced with new taller railings and elements that would achieve the project's eight-foot-tall height. The existing lamp post would be raised to accommodate the increased height. This approach relies on the material and design approach of the historic bridge, although it would significantly alter existing fabric. The applicant has submitted three preferred variations under option A, with option three A including a simple extruded concrete massing elevated to a minimum of eight feet with a three-quarter horizontal reveal at the original top profile of the concrete. The reveal defines the original railing height. Option three B includes articulation with a four-inch setback for the additional height above the original concrete railing height. A slope transition would also be incorporated. Option three C includes an articulation, although the lamp posts would remain at their existing height. Additional railing inserts would be needed at this location due to the height to avoid foot and handholds. As compared to option one and option two, option three has the greatest potential to, to impact the existing bridge character. Therefore, staff finds option three, which includes replacing and reconstructing the existing concrete elements and metal railing, results in direct impacts to historic character that would not be reversible. However, as compared to the other options, option three does not use new materials or a design vocabulary that is different from the existing bridge. Staff finds that reconstruction avoids the insertion of a new and discordant architectural components and recreates the existing configuration of pedestals, piers, and railings in the same materials and design character, but increased to the necessary height to achieve the intended public health and safety objectives. The raised height of the lamp post and their base is a challenge that will require additional exploration. The use of a setback in transition in option three B provides some visual relief and distinguishes between the new and original railing height, but further refinement may improve this option. Therefore, staff suggests that the commission recommend advancing option three B for further development and request the applicant further evaluate the lamp post base and details, as well as the treatment of the top of the metal railing, including whether a curved top could be employed with a reduced height. As previously mentioned, staff recognizes the applicant's need to alter the Taft Bridge's pedestrian railings in order to deter suicide attempts. Staff also appreciates that the applicant recognized the historic nature of the bridge and the need to consider design solutions that minimize impacts to the historic character and important view sheds. Options two and three B each could be further developed. So therefore, staff suggests that the commission recommend the applicant continue to develop options two and three B, exploring additional design refinements that minimize visual and physical impacts to the bridge while meeting project goals. Additional views and rendering should be provided as part of the next submission. This concludes my presentation, and I have incorporated the recommendations throughout the presentation, so I will not repeat them again. I would like to introduce Dr. Richard Beebal of the DC Department of Behavioral Health. He's the chief crisis service of crisis services who would like to address the commission. Cynthia Lynn and other representatives from D Dot and the project design team are also here to assist in answering any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is Mr. Beebal going to be speaking at this time, or is he available for questions only?
My understanding, he wanted to make some initial remarks to the commission.
All right.
Julia, is he on?
He should be in the meeting right now. It may just take a moment as his, as he clicks on to become a panelist. So.
Oh, I believe I see him.
Yeah.
All right. Dr. Beebal, are you in, present in the meeting?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Well, welcome to the NCPC Commission meeting, and we understand you're going to make a few remarks about this project.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity, and I will be brief. But yes, I, I am a psychologist with the DC Department of Behavioral Health and have been supporting this project with partners at D Dot and from the.
Eight five one nine zero four seven one five zero 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 one.
Mr. Commissioner Dixon, I think, yes, put on mute, please. Thank you. I'm sorry, Dr. Beebal.
That's okay. Anyway, partnering with D Dot and the team from the design and engineering team. Just wanted to say quickly that while none of us would ultimately want to be doing this, it, it really does seem to us absolutely necessary. And the creation of suicide deterrent barriers at bridges is, the data really do show that that is the only effective way and by far the most effective way to prevent suicide deaths. We see this as a public health and public safety project involving a historic transportation asset. Half, exactly half of the bridge-related suicide deaths in the District of Columbia since twenty-ten have occurred at the Taft Bridge. So while we fully appreciate the, the the historic and beauty of the bridge, and the team has worked incredibly hard to to design something that would have minimal impact. We, as a city government, certainly think that this is essential to move forward with and will, will save lives. The, as I said, the data showed that that the strategy for suicide prevention frankly is putting time and distance between people and lethal means. And that when someone is temporarily interrupted or thwarted, it, it's very rare that they simply move to a different location. And so the construction of deterrent barriers at other bridges around the country and around the world really do lower suicide rates outright. And it is, it is not just that they temporarily frustrate that impulse. If you talk to suicide people who have survived serious suicide attempts, most of them do not attempt again, and most of them go on to thrive and recover and are very glad that they did not die from their attempt. So again, we thank you for the opportunity to present this. I guess the, the other thing I will say is I'm not sure who all may be listening in, but our team has really been driven by a sense of urgency that has flowed from talking with people who have lost loved ones at the Taft Bridge. And want to just impart to you, to the commission as well, a sense of, the sense of urgency that we have about moving forward with this. It will save lives. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Beebal. We really appreciate your input today. And thank you to Mr. Webb for the excellent presentation. Does, do any of the commissioners have questions for our speakers today? Yes, Commissioner Stidham?
Mr. Webb, I saw in the EDR in your presentation regarding the one oh six process. And I, I know that the one oh six process has started. Can you tell me where we are in that process and what feedback these alternatives have received?
My understanding that there is no federal funding for this project. It is locally district-funded, so FHW, I mean, the federal highway is not involved. It did go before the district's Historic Preservation Review Board a week ago today. So during the agency coordination that I know you participated in, there was some uncertainty whether a full-blown section one oh six process was going to occur. But our understanding from D Dot, there is no federal funding. Our review is advisory, so NCPC does not have an independent section one oh six responsibility. I do not, I don't, I think there will be additional agency coordination with the Commission of Fine Arts because it does have to go back to the CFA. I'm sure the DC SHIPPO will also be participating in any additional agency meetings to continue to look at ways to refine the options. But I don't think there will be a full section one oh six process.
I know the district has its own one oh six process when federal funding is not involved. So I wasn't sure if any of that material had been provided. We had been following it until it didn't look like we would have an action.
Right. Connie with D Dot, do you have further information?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So there was further discussion with Federal Highway and actually the contract we used had some some federal funds. And Lee, just to update you, so at the end, everybody agreed that there is federal highway participation and Federal Highway did review the section one oh six initiation data. That goes to the CSHPO. So we're working closely with Andrew, Andrew Lewis of the CSHPO. And then construct for the construction also Federal Highway will participate. So that's the update.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If Commissioner Stidham has no further questions, so Commissioner Cash?
Thanks. So something really left out to me in the EDR that NCPC, CFA, the Park Service, SHIPPO, and I'm assuming D Dot all sat down together at the outset of reviewing this and somehow came to the conclusion that netting shouldn't even be considered. Could anyone speak to that a little bit more? I know that the report says there was a desire to minimize, minimize the impact, visual impacts from Rock Creek, but was that kind of just like the end-all-be-all of just not even considering or throwing out a netting option?
There were, there were concerns with anything hanging off the sides. I, I think there was also a concern of the effectiveness of something hanging off the side as a suicide prevention. And, and liking, it was quite a conversation related to things. Side, and I think that's where it ended is just, it was, and I think SHIPPO weighed in also at that time stating his objections or concerns with things hanging off the outside, but I'll let D Dot speak more to that.
Mrs. Skender?
In addition to what Mr. Stidham said, it will be very difficult for D Dot to inspect and maintain the bridge. So having this horizontal meeting would have caused an issue for us, bridge inspection and maintenance.
Thank you. Mr. Wasef, did you have a comment?
No, Connie had listed already.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
A second part to that. So I'll get to this more in comment, but to what extent, taking the same things into account with maintenance and visual impact, what kind of conversations were thought about, about the actual experience of a pedestrian or a driver on the bridge itself when you're going to be ten feet away from the barrier as opposed to a hundred and thirty feet down from when you're on the parkway? So I know that, that NPS would probably have less of an interest in the experience of driving on the roadway. But I was wondering if like internally with D Dot or stakeholders, if there was a thought to that same visual impact going across the bridge for, for the users?
Commissioner Cash, if I understand, if I understand you, you're discussing about horizontal meeting, right?
Well, so the, the three options that were presented to us, a lot of the discussion between the three options that we have in front of us are talking about what the visual impact or what the impacts are with like maintenance and all that kind of stuff. But I don't really see anything talking about what the potential negatives are of essentially like having these new interactions on the bridge with the actual users of the bridge as opposed to people that are looking up at the bridge from Rock Creek.
Yeah, so for, for, I meant to say about inspection, we literally had the horizontal meeting and tried to see how we will be able to inspect it and then maintain it. So that became a bigger issue for us. So I don't know if I clearly stated it for you. It was part of the package. There were horizontal meeting, vertical meeting. We had several concept level development where we considered this.
Okay, and then my last question, I'll save the rest for comments. So I did see in the presentation that of the three options that have been kind of put forward with the, the glass, the mesh wire and the raising up the wall. There's an approximate price tag associated with all those. Do we know what the approximate price tag of a netting option might have been? Or did we not even get that far after you kind of moved it out?
No, we didn't get that far because, you know, it will deter us from the basic, our basic bridge, bridge inspection and maintenance. Especially, you know, the bridge is a hundred, more than, about a hundred-year-old bridge. So maintenance and inspection will be, you know, will be more frequent. So for.
I'd be happy to hear anything from, I see the engineer, the engineering firm is on and might have some answer on that.
Any, anyone able to answer Commissioner Cash's question about cost, differentiated costs?
I can. We did not look at the cost of the netting at all because it was rejected from the first meeting from many agencies that we have to get their approval of the system. I would like to emphasize something or clarify something. When Connie is talking about inspection and maintenance, she's not only talking about inspection and maintenance of the railing, but the bridge itself. This bridge is really high above the Creekview Park, so it is typically inspected using what we normally term as a super snuber. It is a bucket truck with a long arm with several joints that goes allow, the truck will be above the bridge and the arm goes out and below the bridge and the inspector is in the bucket under the bridge. If we add this netting, this will not allow the inspection of the bridge using this vehicle because it has to go out too far, and this will eliminate the possibility of using these trucks. And basically, the inspection will be either impossible or extremely expensive from the Creekview Park itself to go up this height. So this is a distinction we have all to be aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Wasef. Do you have additional questions, Commissioner Cash?
I'm, I'm good, but to the extent that others have comments that are, are on point, then I'm happy to hear them, but that's all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stidham?
I wasn't sure. I, I just wanted to add that during many of the conversations that I participated in, there was extensive conversation regarding both the motorist and the pedestrian cyclist experience. experience crossing the bridge um with any of these elements. Um, so I wasn't sure if your question got answered.
That's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions, Commissioner Cash? No, Commissioner Cash, if you have no further questions, Commissioner Wright? Okay, Commissioner Wright has a question or?
Yeah, I that doesn't make sense to me that the bucket trucks can't be used with the netting, but they can be used with to go to go over um uh an eight-foot solid um addition to the bridge. How 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 does that work? How how can one be possible and not the other?
Because the eight-foot basically, if you look at the bucket truck, the uh is a mechanism on the truck makes the first piece of the arm above eight feet. So if you look at them working, it goes out and you when you make it horizontal, it will clear the eight foot very easily because it is not small truck. It is a full-size truck with the mechanism on top makes it higher than eight feet.
But but the but the but the mesh at the uh in option two and option three, the height of the obstacle to the bucket truck is the same, is it not?
Uh, the mesh is a horizontal mesh is like thirteen feet is extending horizontally out from the bridge. So the arm has to go out, these six or parts of the arm has to go out of the bridge thirteen feet horizontally, back down and back again the thirteen feet before you are even under the bridge.
Do we do we have um a section anywhere uh that shows that? Because I it that's kind of unclear that that or the uh section, a profile. I I don't really get this. This this is that's not making sense to me.
Uh, I can send a picture of the clock if needed.
I'd say I'm looking through the images I have, Commissioner Wright. Wadi, do you know of one that could speak to what Commissioner Wright is asking in the presentation materials we have?
No, it is not in the it's uh in the in the material we sent you, but I can find a picture of uh uh inspection truck.
So are are you saying that the the mesh option that is no longer being considered? That you're not talking about the mesh option that's option two here?
Oh, no, 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 no. Uh, option two is eight foot tall.
Okay, that's why it wasn't making sense.
Uh, yeah, okay, I am sorry.
Thank you for clarifying. Right. I think like a little bit like a misconfused uh that we didn't present any horizontal netting in our presentation, except we provided some sketches, area sketches, part of the presentation or booklet. But uh what Mr. Webb Lee uh presented option A, B, C, or like one, two, three, uh, we didn't present any of the horizontal netting, which typically like a ten feet, fifteen feet like below the sidewalk level.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now it makes sense. I was paying attention. I just didn't and it didn't make sense that what you were saying. So.
Yeah.
My my apology, but uh I believe Commissioner Cash was talking about the horizontal knitting on the outside of the bridge.
Got it. Okay.
The question is related.
Very good. Commissioner Wright, did you have any further questions?
No.
Okay. Are there any other commissioners who have questions for the presenters or there's the resource people with them? Well, hearing none, we do have three people signed up to speak today. And our first person is Janelle Pagets with um um Advisory Neighborhood uh Commission three C zero three. Ms. Pagets, you have five minutes to speak. Welcome to the commission.
Thank you. Hi there. I'm Janelle Pagets, an advisory neighborhood commissioner in Woodley Park, representing three C O three and the current chair of A N C three C. Our commission area represents the residents directly north of the William Howard Taft Bridge. I'm authorized to represent the A N C, A N C three C on this matter. On April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, my neighbor, Dr. Peter Tripp, jumped off the Taft Bridge. His death was not covered in the media at that time, as suicides are typically not something the press covers. I was made aware of his death in May of twenty twenty-two by a friend of his partner, also my neighbor and now friend, Dr. Chelsea Vanthoff. By June of twenty twenty-two, we had done our research and discovered just how dangerous this bridge is. A N C three C passed a resolution in June of twenty twenty-two, calling for the installation of protective bridge barriers on the William Howard Taft Bridge. This passed on consent, emphasizing the immediate need to take action. A N C three C also submitted a letter regarding the William Howard Taft Bridge pedestrian railing improvement concepts designs into the H P R B record. A N C three C voted unanimously by a voice vote to approve providing written comments. Those comments asked that H P R B concur with the recommendation of the Commission of Fine Arts and approve option three B. All the options presented within option three replace the piers and the railings of the bridge in the same design character and increase to a height of eight feet. A N C three C agrees with C F A that this would be more harmonious with the bridge's historic appearance than the other options, which would allow uh which would add a new barrier system to the existing railings. A N C three C also understands the complexity of undertake of this undertaking on this historic bridge and agrees with C F A's members' expressed willingness to further consider option two. A N C three C also requested that H P R B not further delay this project with more design options and further reviews. The statistics cited in our June twenty twenty-two resolution have not been updated since then. And the reality is that we require even more urgency to protect lives now than we did then. At the H P R B meeting, board members agreed with the urgent need for the safety infrastructure and then no further delay should be taken. They also stated that if the experts say the barriers need to be eight feet tall to be most effective, they should be eight feet tall. I will note that the data provided to us by the D C office of the chief medical examiner investigated a total of twenty-six suicide deaths that involved a decedent jumping from a bridge from January first, twenty ten to June first, twenty twenty-two. Of those twenty-six, of those twenty-six, fifteen deaths occurred at the William Howard Taft and Duke Ellington Bridge, thirteen at the Taft and two at the Ellington. The Ellington barriers are not consistently eight feet tall across the entire bridge. No one wants to put barriers on this beautiful historic bridge. We need to put barriers on this bridge. The whole of the government of the District of Columbia has worked hard and fast, recognizing the long overdue need for the safety infrastructure. As the architect Michael Murphy has said, architectural design is never neutral. It either helps or it hurts. The built environment is a profoundly powerful influence in everyone's daily lives. A bridge, by definition, is something that's intended to reconcile or form a connection between two things. The Taft Bridge is not performing as defined, and its architectural design is hurting people. The submission your task with reviewing can rectify these failures. A N C three C also recognizes and greatly appreciates and thanks the effort and tremendous work of everyone involved in this important public safety project. The survivors and advocates, the executive office of the mayor, the council and staff, D dot, D B H, and the project team. This has been a collaborative effort with everyone working as hard and as fast as they can to get what needs to be done, done. Time is of the essence when it comes to installing the railing, and the gift of time to those most vulnerable is what this project will provide. The bridge is unsafe, and we kind of need to fix it. Thank you for your time and consideration. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Pagets. Appreciate your input and your testimony. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Ms. Pagets on her remarks? Hearing none. Um, hearing no questions for Ms. Pagets, I'm going to move on to our next individual who's providing testimony, and that is Chelsea Vanthoff. Ms. Vanthoff. I apologize.
Oh, well, sorry. If I made Chelsea, um it couldn't make it right now, but she did ask that I offer to read her testimony on her behalf, if that's something you're willing to entertain.
Um, I'm 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 certainly willing to entertain that. Um, uh, Julia.
That's that would that would be fine. We were prepared to read it, but I think it would be very appropriate for her to read that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pagets. We appreciate um you uh sharing that testimony with us. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Proceed.
Okay. This testimony is being read on behalf of Dr. Chelsea Vanthoff, surviving partner to Dr. Peter David Tripp, one of many in crisis who have fallen victim to the Taft Bridge. She thanks N C P C and the members of the public for their time and attention. I'll begin by sharing some evidence-based findings related to suicide prevention and restricting access to means. Multiple studies have shown that nine out of ten people who attempt suicide and survive will not go on to die by suicide at a later date. And that in general, research has shown that persons thwarted and utilizing a before method of suicide do not typically seek other approaches to kill him or herself. From a twenty seventeen study comparing different suicide prevention measures at bridges, barriers and safety nets were most were both effective, with mean suicide reduction of sixty-eight point seven percent barriers and seventy-one point one percent safety nets respectively. Measures that do not secure the whole hotspot and still allow jumps of fifteen meters or more were less effective. Further, the analysis revealed that that barriers of at least two point three meters in height and safety nets fixed significantly below pedestrian level deter suicidal jumps. Secured bridge heads and inbound angle barriers seem to enhance the effectiveness of the measures. Findings can help plan and improve the effectiveness of future suicide prevention measures on high structures. I would like to stress the implication of these findings to improve the effectiveness of future suicide prevention measures as opposed to using them as a bare minimum with which to preserve an enament structure whose design is proven to be a danger to public safety. And finally, from a September twenty twenty-two Washington Post opinion piece submitted by an architect directly involved in the design of the Ellington Bridge Barrier in the nineteen eighties, shortly after our grassroots advocacy for this barrier gained media attention. Amortized the two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollar cost of this prevention effort equates to less than two thousand dollars per life saved, a cost that is declining daily. This compares with the average cost to society of a suicide at one point thirty-three million dollars. To those who argue that thwarting access to a lethal jumping site is a waste of money, D C's experiment resoundingly counter-argues with data not true. To summarize these points, suicide is often impulsive. Restricting access to means is one of the most effective ways to save people who would otherwise die by suicide. Barriers have been proven to work at preventing suicide over and over. And this preventative measure is actually cheaper for the city than letting more people die. My late partner, Dr. Peter Tripp, whose death by suicide was facilitated by the Taft Bridge in April of twenty twenty-two, and I often walked our dog on both the Ellington and Taft Bridges. Never once did the presence of suicide of the suicide barrier on the Ellington cross my mind. Not a obstruction of views, nor the fact that it was there for any purpose. Now its purpose lives rent-free in my head. The first time I ever considered the view from the Ellington Bridge was the night that I looked through its suicide barrier and saw Peter's police lights under the Taft. And let me assure the members of the the committee, my view was not at all obstructed. Since losing Peter, I've heard the sentiment, I didn't even realize it was there in reference to the guardrails on the Ellington Bridge. I would like to emphasize to those in opposition to a lifesaving barrier of effective height on the Taft on the basis of disrupting its historic integrity, that we've disrupted its its integrity for strictly aesthetic purposes in the past. Now, here we are faced with an evidence-supported solution to deaths by suicide from the Taft, and its successful implementation is not yet guaranteed, which only means that the lives of people in crisis in our community are also not guaranteed. I would like to draw your attention to an expert from executive director's recommendation. And the commission recommend advancing option three B for further development and request the applicant further evaluate the lamp post base lamp post base details, as well as the treatment of the top metal railing, including whether a curved top could be employed to reduce height. I want to address this contrary. I will reiterate the findings of a study comparing the effectiveness of barriers and safety nets in preventing deaths by suicide. Measures that do not secure the whole hotspot and still allow jumps of fifteen meters or more were less effective. Further, barriers of at least two point three meters in height deter suicidal jumps. The height of the barrier in the Ellington stands at eight feet and has been effective in curing suicides since its implementation in nineteen eighty-six. Eight feet is the recommended height based on various research analysis. And for this governing entity to potentially delay this critical project any longer in an effort to find evidence against the expert conclusions reflected in design option three B is nothing less than a public health risk. The Taft has already claimed another victim since Peter left, and respectfully, any more lives lost on this bridge will be by the N C P C hands.
Five minutes.
Just to drive my point home, I would like to remind everyone here that a barrier for the Taft was slated in the same time period as the Ellington. So the point newspaper, we're in newspaper articles references plans for construction in nineteen eighty-seven. But any reference to barrier in the Taft disappears from the public record after that time. Um, and you guys have a copy of this. Um, so I'll just read the last paragraph here. When I hear concerns about the aesthetic component, the view knowing this barrier will be effective in saving the lives of those in crisis make those bars beautiful to me. Let's make history today with the approval of a lifesaving barrier with an evidence-based design. The Taft Bridge setting a precedent for suicide prevention in our community. Thank you. And if you have pets, please be kind to your vet. Thank you.
Well, you, I again, I want to thank you, Ms. Pagets, for your um research and your comments and sharing it with the committee, and please thank Ms. Vanthoff for her um her message that she shared. And for both of you, you know, I just want to on behalf of the commission express our our sorrow and our sympathy over the loss of someone you loved dearly and um, you know, shared life with. So we're very sorry uh about that. We're just grateful that you were able to come and share this um information with us. And uh if anyone has any questions right now for um Ms. Pagets, um, please um indicate, raise your hand. Hearing none. We'll move on uh to uh the next person who has uh bringing is bringing testimony to us, and that is Mr. Peter Wood from Advisory Neighborhood Commission one C zero three. Mr. Wood, you have five minutes for your comments. Thank you, Ms. Pagets.
Hi. Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Peter Wood. I, just like Janelle, I'm currently an advisory neighborhood commissioner. I serve in Abas Morgan in A N C one C zero three. And I'm currently the chairperson of our commission. I've been authorized by our commission to share these thoughts today per our November first meeting, so last night. Uh, and because we voted on this last night, uh, I'm just going to read first the text of letter that we recently sent to Historic Preservation Review Board, as well as some kind of additional the cuff comments to give add further context and spirit of the letter. Uh, a lot of this text is also very similar to what A N C three C has passed uh a recently, a recent meeting of theirs. We ask the that the Historic Preservation Review Board, as well as N C P C, concur with the recommendation of the Commission of Fine Arts and approve option three B for installing safety railings on the Taft Bridge of Connecticut Avenue Northwest. A N C one C agrees with C F A that this would be more harmonious with the bridge's historic appearance than the other options. More importantly, it would add a new barrier system better suited to prevent incidents of self-harm. A N C one C understands the complexity of this project on such a historic structure and agrees with C F A members' expressed willingness to also consider option two, which would add an eight-foot-tall wire mesh supported by metal stations for its relative transparency and ease of maintenance. A N C one C additionally requests that N C P C and H P R B not further delay this project with more design options and reviews. Our constituents require urgency to protect lives and keep the city safe. Uh, that's the text of our letter, and just speaking from some personal experience, I have a lot or at least some involving self-harm and suicide. I've worked as a volunteer for the Suicide Walk in Washington, D.C. I've organized a regional walk as well. I have had several, I have several mental health practitioners in my immediate family. I also have known many people who have considered a self-harm, who have tried it. I have friends that have died by suicide and chosen to do so. Just last year, I was down the street and had someone tell me that they were in that moment walking down the street to go jump off of the Taft Bridge. I'm glad that they didn't, I'm glad we got to engage and that it didn't happen. I am also a frequent pedestrian running, biking, cycling on both the Ellington and Taft Bridges. And I'll say that just as someone who's not interested at this moment in self-harm, it's still scary to have to walk across the bridge that you could accidentally slip off of. So this is first and foremost a matter of suicide prevention, but there are also this kind of tend- tangential benefits that come from improving our infrastructure. Uh, I'll just close with this, that our commission definitely takes seriously the delicate balances between safety and the aesthetics of our city and our neighborhood. And there is beauty in making sure that our infrastructure keeps us safe. And I think that is something that is very congruent with what I understand to be N C P C's ambitions, and that's something that we take really seriously as well. So I appreciate the time to be able to speak today and hope that we see some progress soon.
Thank you, and we appreciate you, Mr. Wood. Thank you for bringing uh your testimony to the commission today. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wood? Any commissioners have questions at this time? Any commissioners have questions at this time? Okay, well, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Thank you, Ms. Pagetts. And, and we're going to move on now to open it up to the commission for discussion. I would entertain a motion to approve, uh, the comments on the concept plans for the Taft Bridge pedestrian rail improvements.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Been moved by Vice Chair Hewitt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Stidham. All right. Thank you for those motion, motion for that motion and second, and I'm going to move on, and I'm going to begin with Commissioner Cash, if you have comments on, on this, uh, uh, presentation.
Oh, definitely. I definitely want to thank our, our A N C commissioners for, for coming and providing their testimony and, and giving us the, the results of their commission's deliberations. Um, I want to thank Ms. Vanthoff, even though she couldn't be here today. I know my boss has had several conversations with her. Um, and she's been very active on this issue for a number of years. Um, I do want to go back a little bit to some process issues. So, um, I did hear some, some desire not to, to lengthen this process, and I'm in no way advocating to lengthen this process um, to see more options. Uh, I do want to, to just note that it's, it's unfortunate. So this reprogramming to, to undertake this study happened back, I think, last March, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to do the study that, that's before us now to help us make these decisions. Um, so we can't fix what's, what's already been done, but I think it, it, it would have been nice to have that, that fourth option to look at. We heard in the testimony of Ms. Vanthoff that, that by some estimates, the netting system are actually even more effective than the barrier system. So I know the, the studies out there go both ways. Um, I do want to note that, that I was talking about price, and no one could put a price on how important this project is moving forward. It, it needs to move forward. Um, I think that, that we have to, to remember that, that going forward, the district is going to need to put its money where its mouth is. So I'm hopeful that, that when the mayor submits her budget, whichever option that, that we turn out landing on after these, these next processes that we get this moving as quickly as possible. Um, because I know N C P C approval is important, but it's also important that the district be able to, to get the option, um, refine it and make sure that it's implemented, because I think that, that the, the need that was expressed by the, the A N C commissioners and Ms. Vanthoff's testimony speaks to that. Um, so when I was bringing up things like questions about, about some of the feasibility or, or cost options, um, I think that, that we, it's good to have all the options on the table. So I, I hope that going forward, when we have projects like this, that, um, especially when we're spending seven hundred thousand dollars on, on this presentation that we've essentially gotten, and, and these options have been put forward, that um, we really look at, at all the options, because I think that we had a really missed opportunity to really compare some apples to apples here and, and have those conversations about the aesthetic on the bridge and, and what these, these maintenance problems could have been. Um, so I'm in no way advocating that I'm going to vote, well, I am going to vote in favor of this. I'm in no way advocating that we slow this down, but, but I just hope in the future that um, we have a little bit more of an open mind with, because these are very strange projects that we have when we have so many different federal interests and local interests involved. Um, so I, I will just leave it at that, and thanks again to, to all of the advocacy that's gone on behind this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Cash. Excellent points. Um, next we are going to hear from Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Davis had to leave, I believe. Commissioner Jacchetti, are you here? Yes.
I'm here. Thank you very much. No comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacchetti. Commissioner Kozart.
Just want to also appreciate the A N C commissioners for, um, testifying and for doing their advocacy around this. And thanks to the staff for the presentation. I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner McMahon.
And thank you. Uh, I appreciate the testimony from the, the A N C commissioners. Um, impactful testimony of backing up on how important this project is. Important that they move forward. With that, I've been associating myself with Commissioner Cash, which probably doesn't happen often. But I think certainly this issue, and it kind of even reflects on our, our prior discussion about the Navy Yard, about really looking at options, uh, to meet the critical need and how we saw them. I'm disappointed that there wasn't more thought given into the netting um, as a potential solution. I think that while it's not the most important thing, you sheds and, and, uh, from the walkers across, I think is important. Um, we'll lose that, we'll lose it for an important reason. And so we'll look to, you know, clear our way out of this so the district can get on with putting something in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner Stidham.
Um, no comments, but I do want to, uh, thank the district how they have approached this um, and the thoughtfulness they have put into the project. Um, and that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Stidham. Commissioner Argo.
Mike, that helps. Um, uh, I'll associate, um, uh, my remarks with Commissioner McMahon's on this. And, um, I feel after hearing the presentation and understanding, you know, uh, getting information that I hadn't had before. Well, I, I have a sense of, of urgency about it. Um, and, uh, you know, what it involves, uh, anything that involves potential life-saving. So, um, I support, uh, I support this, and I support any effort to move it forward in an expeditious way.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Hewitt, please.
Yes, first I'd like to thank A N C commissioners Paget and Wood, um, for their presentations today. Um, while many of us may, or several of us may have lost dear loved ones or friends to suicide, myself included. Um, I learned things today from them that I did not know, and, and in terms of the number of, um, deaths from, particularly from that bridge, um, the Taft Bridge. And, uh, it's, it's just really tragic. It was an eye-opening. Um, and while it is a very beautiful historic bridge, but saving lives takes precedence. And I just really, really want to thank you for that. So that was all I had to add.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hewitt. Thank you very much. Commissioner Green.
Thank you very much. No, I appreciate all the thought that went into this and, and in the, in the, for me, in the, the sense of urgency, I would, as Dr. Bebo and others mentioned, I obviously support the removal of option one, but I would also as support the op, the removal of option two. I don't believe this adds anything architecturally to the solution. It's a mere utilitarian approach that adds nothing to the bridge. Uh, pursue option three B is, is, has the impact, the potential to be extraordinarily safe and beautiful. Um, the only quality of, the only good quality about option two is that it's reversible. But shouldn't our interventions be permanent? Shouldn't they be beautiful? Shouldn't they be worth keeping? And I think option three B does that, and I would personally like to see a focus on three B in the interest of speed as the option that provides safety, but does it in a way that, that's, that's, that's beautiful? And, um, you know, in our protecting people's lives, it doesn't have to be utilitarian. We should protect people in a way that's beautiful and humane and, um, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Green, for your remarks. Commissioner Wright.
Well, I, 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 I'm having difficulty with this. Um, because I just, I think it's been, there's a reductivist approach that makes it seem like a binary choice. And, and I don't think it is. I, I, I think that be, and I, and I also don't, I don't necessarily, um, I spent a career trying not to make decisions based on fear of setting a precedent. But in this case, I think I'd make an exception because we're, we're looking at, um, at, at, at setting a precedent for deterrence. And this city has, I don't know how many beautiful bridges like this, but, but a dozen anyway. And before, before we say that, you know, that, that urgency is king, and I, I, I have a real, I have a, a visceral response to changing the bridge in the sense that it's permanent and irreversible and, and completely changes the character of, of the bridge. And, and, and to say that it's either or suggests that permanently changing our, you know, the bridge is a vote for not caring about people who commit suicide. And I don't, I don't think it's that simple. Um, and I think it is worth taking the time to get it right. I, 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 I think that the option option three has potential to be less bad than what it looks like now. But I don't think I could, I could say that it's going to be an improvement other than in the function that it serves. And I'm not, I, 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 no one's going to argue that, that it isn't necessary. I don't, it, it's just that I think spending more time looking at what could be a, a, a de minimis approach, because we're in the business of preserving cultural patrimony, and we need to take it seriously.
He'll be ready at eight fifteen, so we need to probably leave here.
You need to mute yourself right now. Um, anyway, so I, 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 it's not to minimize the seriousness of the problem we're seeking to solve, but I don't know that it's, that it's one or the other. And I don't know that taking a little bit more time to get this as good as we can get it isn't worth doing it, because there are many other bridges. And if we, if we decide that this is the appropriate approach, I can imagine other bridges in Washington becoming unrecognizable in the future as we try to solve for, solve this problem. And I don't think that's advisable.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And, um, so to close, I would just like to say again, thank you to those who provided testimony and for the research that was provided. Um, I think it is very complex that the design of, of public infrastructure and user experience has to first and foremost consider public health and safety. And I think that, um, that is important, and I think that's been discussed here. And it's clear that the applicant has put in a great deal of thought on this and, and thought about what possible solutions can be, um, proposed. I agree, there is a sense of urgency again when there's public health and safety involved. And I support the recommendation to further, you know, define the two of the alternatives to evaluate what the best approach would be um, and, and support that, um, with, um, with proper speed to, to protect the public. Has Commissioner, I think Commissioner Dixon passed.
I, I didn't, but I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, I just wanted.
For all the comments. It's okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Are there any further comments or questions? Well, hearing none, Ms. Koster, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the roll?
Yes, uh, Vice Chair Hewitt made a motion to approve comments on the concept plans for the Taft Bridge pedestrian rail improvements. It was seconded by Commissioner Stidham. And with that, uh, I will ask Commissioner Kozart.
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner Stidham.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Hewitt.
Yes.
Uh, Chair Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon.
Yes.
Commissioner Cash.
Yes.
And Commissioner Jacchetti.
Yes.
Thank you. All noted. Commissioner, uh, Davis had stepped away.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Koster, and the motion has carried. And again, thank you to all for that good discussion and, and excellent presentations. This concludes our, you're welcome. This concludes our open session. Our next regular meeting is December seventh of two thousand and twenty-three. That's on Thursday, and it will be at one P M. But there is a retreat tomorrow, and just want to remind folks that I believe staff has asked that we be here by eight forty-five in the morning. And we'll look forward to the conversation about what lies ahead for N C P C and uh, in, in large and small ways. And, and I have been promised there will be coffee. And, um, we will have something to, to nosh on, I'm sure. So, uh, if there's no further business, the commission meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all very much.